Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are called to order. Please stand and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, and in accord with DCA guidelines related to the functioning of virtual meetings, this regularly scheduled meeting in the Jackson Township Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you, Mr. Gertner. Roll call, please. Are you there? Can you hear me yet?
You're on mute, maybe.
Can you hear us? Anthony's working on it.
Can't she hear? I can do some of it.
Can you hear us, Danielle? I'm gonna take that as a no.
We have a stenographer, and I can do some of the administrative stuff if you want. While he's working on it. Well, she wasn't. She didn't. Yeah. All right. Mr. Chairman, as we have a stenographer, I'm gonna, I'll do my best. So for the regularly scheduled meeting of April 21, I can pinch hit a lot of different places. I can still bake a bagel, too. April 21, 2021, roll call. I may not do it in the correct order. Ms. Russell. Ms. Camello. Mr. Costanzo.
Here.
Mr. Hurley.
Here.
Ms. Fritsch. Ms. McElhaney is absent. Mr. Najarian.
Here.
Mr. Book.
Here. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gertner. I'm not certain if we have any resolutions up.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one resolution. I don't recall the number. Because I don't, maybe Mr. Alfieri took it with him even. That would be nice. It's a resolution regarding the solar array. What resolution number is it, Mr. Alfieri?
2021-10.
The solar array off of Lakehurst Road.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Oh, that's right. So I hope I get who's eligible. Ms. Russell.
Hold up. Ask her if she was present.
I think you were. Were you? Yeah. Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. I believe that's our only resolution.
That is. I have a matter for discussion that we'll, that we'll address.
All right, how about minutes? Do we have any minutes for approval? Since I don't know that we do.
I know there are minutes that just came this evening, so you normally carry those.
All right, didn't see them, so we will carry those. Any minutes, we'll address next meeting. In terms of vouchers, I have one voucher here for King Reporting. I don't see the other voucher from Danielle. I don't think it's in the package. Let me just check this package. No, I don't see another one, so we'll have to address her invoice another day. But as to the King Reporting, I do have a voucher for $250. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the voucher?
I'll make a motion to pay all bills.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Russell. Ms. Camello. Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Fritsch. Ms. Fritsch. Sorry. Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
And Mr. Book. This is why the bakery closed.
Bagels got stale.
I don't believe that we have anything under announcements.
We do, actually, Mr. Chairman. We have several announcements related to the calendar. This is for members of the public as well. We have several matters being carried for this evening, so I'll just go through the list. If I may, the Hanson matter, members of the public, this is number three on the agenda, variance number 3356. That matter is being carried to the May 19, 2021 meeting without the requirement for further notice. So for members of the public, matter number three, Ronald Hanson, 3356, that matter is being carried without the requirement of further notice to the May 19, 2021 meeting, beginning at 7:00 PM. Members of the public are directed to the municipal website and municipal locations for publication in order to participate in that meeting. The next matter is the Levi matter. That's application number four, 3354, 390 New Central Avenue. That matter, too, is being carried to the May 19, 2021 meeting, so for members of the public. That matter, and in all matters, I should say, they're being carried. Each attorney has, in fact, waived time through the statutory requirement for the protection of the board on consent, so we appreciate that. The variance number 3354, Levi, is being carried also to the May 19, 2021 meeting at 7:00 PM without the requirement for the notice. Again, the public is directed to the municipal website and municipal locations for publication in order to participate. The Rise matter, which is number five on the agenda, variance number 3357, that, too, is being carried, and I'm announcing them separately on purpose, to the May 19, 2021 meeting without the requirement of further notice. Members of the public, that matter is being carried to the May 19, 2021 meeting, beginning at 7:00 PM without the requirement of further notice. The members of the public are directed to the municipal website, municipal locations for publication in order to participate. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, the Faculty 2 LLC, Hawkins Road and West Veterans Highway, that matter also is, use variance 3355, that matter is also being carried to the May 19, 2021 meeting without the requirement of further notice. Members of the public, that matter is being carried to the, again, to the May 19, 2021 meeting, beginning at 7:00 PM. Members of the public are directed to the municipal website and municipal locations for publication in order to participate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gertner. Quite an adjustment to the calendar. Okay. So I take it then for this evening, we are left with two applications. That would be the Greg Paoli variance, 3329, and then Mr. Cardinali's.
Yes, however, you've not met me yet, Mr. Chairman. There was one, one resolution I asked the board to consider approving. I'll discuss it. This is not the norm. I think almost the entirety of the board will recall that there was a application, 2019 at this point, for a cell tower. It was not on municipal property. There was litigation. The municipality provided a municipal location, and for, it started pre, the application started pre-COVID, but with COVID and some other administrative reasons for delay, including the fact that, for reasons, the municipality, neither the municipality nor the applicant understand that the entire property is being considered by the DEP to be part of the Green Acres Rossi for protection and no development. On behalf, actually, this is a joint request of the township and of the applicant to grant another extension for one year to permit the applicant and the township to negotiate with DEP to free up the development. Again, you'll recall that the settlement generally was favorable, favorable to the municipality because instead of lease payments being made to a private entity, they'll be made to the municipality. So we do need a formal motion to approve that extension. I would ask respectfully, Mr. Chairman, if you could ask for that. And again, I'm making, I can make these representations. I've been involved also in these discussions.
All right. With that, can I have a motion and a second to approve the extension for one additional year? That's what they're asking for?
Yes.
That's the essence of the request?
Correct.
A motion and a second.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes. I'm off the hook.
So I had an issue with my laptop. I couldn't hear your audio at all, and Jeff needs to be let in also.
Jeff is in, Danielle. Thank you. Jeff, you there?
He should be calling from a number ending in 3612. So my apologies, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So Danielle, stay with the roll call and the motion, please.
Sure. Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhaney?
She's absent.
Oh, my apologies. Okay. Ms. Camello? Um, Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian? Thank you. Mr. Najarian? Mr. Book?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. With that, I don't believe there are any other additional matters for discussion that I see here. Do you agree, Mr. Gertner?
That's my understanding, Mr. Chairman, yes.
All right, then with that, we'll move on to the professionals. Can we square professionals? And then professionals, please introduce yourself to the record.
Sure. And Mr. Jacob, is Mr. Miskovich in the meeting as well? Okay.
Should be.
Give us a minute. Well, you know, Mr. Chairman, I just, as, we'll try to address it as we can, certainly for the first application, the traffic engineer is not necessary, so these folks shouldn't have to wait. So I will do my best, Mr. Hill and Mr. Peters. Can each of you raise your, and Mr. Puporo. Would you kindly raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present on behalf of the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can each of you identify yourselves, please?
Evan Hill, Board Engineer.
Ernie Peters, Board Planner.
Mr. Puporo. Okay.
Jeff, we can't hear you. Can you hear us? Anthony, any indication that he's on or not?
All right, so if, so Mr. Puporo, if you can hear us, Mr. Jacob, our technical person indicates you cannot be a panelist if you dial in, so we're hopeful you can utilize the computer system. But meanwhile, Mr.--
We're gonna move on.
Yeah, at least as to respect.
So while those technical difficulties play themselves out, we're gonna move on to the first application. That's Greg Paoli, variance 3329. Mr. Paoli, are you here?
Yeah.
Come on up, sir. Come on up to the podium. Introduce yourself.
My name's Craig Paoli.
Okay. If you raise your right hand, how do you pronounce your last name, though?
Paoli.
Paoli. Mr. Paoli, do you solemnly swear or affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. If you can give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Craig Paoli, last name P-O-W-A-L-I-E, 158 Frank Applegate Road, Jackson, New Jersey.
Okay, Mr. Paoli, did you have an application here before us where you are proposing a, it started out as a five footer, then it was crossed off, you're looking for a six-foot fence, right?
Yes, sir.
And it says, "An open-style fence in the front yard where such fences are prohibited." So you were on a, you're a corner property, is that right?
Yes.
You're on the corner of what two roads?
Frank Applegate and Johnson Lane.
I don't know if his, his survey can be put up on the board. Anthony, is it possible to do that? Do you have it there?
Yeah. Yes.
If you would, Mr. Paoli, I see Xs along the Johnson Lane South. Is, is that where you're proposing to put the six-foot fence?
Yes, along black aluminum.
Say that again?
Black aluminum fence.
Black aluminum. Is that an open face, black aluminum?
Yes.
At six feet in height?
Yes.
All right, is it your intention to put it right on the property line or along the property line? What was your intention in that regard?
Just run it along the property line and everything else, just to fence it in, because I have a dog.
And then as you move in a generally southerly direction from, I guess, looks like the, along the property line towards the rear of the property, it seems to me, as I'm looking up there, you're not running the fence all the way to the rear property line, but you're, you're bisecting it someplace along the way. Is that true?
Yes, it's only going halfway down, because all the rest is wetlands.
All right. And do you have an exact measurement as to how far down you're gonna go before you make that right turn and come across the back?
Think it was 10 or 15 feet down.
All right. And then, and then along the back, you have zeros, or what look like zeros or circles with a straight line. Is there a fence there now?
No.
And is that gonna be a chain link fence?
Yes.
And is that gonna, intended to be six foot high as well?
Yes.
And then when you come across to the actual property line, which would be, I guess, the westerly property line, you're then coming up that property line with a chain link fence?
Yes.
Also six feet in length?
Yes.
And then as you get to a point, which is hard to tell where, your intention is that to come straight across to intersect the back corner of the property?
Yes, right to the back of the house.
And is that gonna be with the six-foot aluminum fence?
Yep.
So there's no fencing there now?
No.
And, and the reason you want the fencing?
I have a dog and a son, so I'm trying to fence it all anywhere they can play.
A dog and a son, you said?
Yeah.
I would, I would do it in that order also.
Interesting phraseology. I don't have any additional questions. Board members, any questions, Mr. Paoli?
If I may, through the chair, I just need to clarify. As you face your house on the right side, where you're running the six-foot aluminum open fence towards your back of your property, how deep is that going back? You said 10 feet, that doesn't sound right.
No, 10 feet this way. So you're talking, if I'm looking at it to the left or the right side?
If you're looking at your house to your left, that aluminum fence and black aluminum fencing is gonna go, it's gonna basically go south to the rear of your property, which stops just before the wetlands. How, what, length of fencing?
What he said, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the measurement he tried to give, it would be no closer than 10 feet from where he's gonna make the turn. There's gonna be like a 10-foot gap?
Yeah. So it, if I'm looking at the house, the house, it'll go, the black aluminum, 50 feet this way, and like another, at least 10 to 15 going straight south.
So it's, so the run that you are actually proposing is 50 foot?
Yeah, 50 foot to the left, where, to the left side, and then that'll come right by the sidewalk?
50 feet on the Johnson Lane side?
Yes.
Thanks. Mr. Chairman, if I may, through the chairman, just for Mr. Hill, just so the record is clear, what's the reason that he requires the, not, not the proofs, but what's the reason? What's the trigger for the variant?
It's the front yard.
Two fronts, right?
Correct.
And the two fronts are the one on Frank Applegate? Even though he's, both fence lines are behind the, the structure?
Well, not along Johnson Lane. That's the front yard as well.
Got it. Thank you.
Board members, anything further? Nothing further? Mr. Paoli, anything further?
No, that's it. Thank you.
If you have a motion and a second?
You don't, because we have to ask the public.
Move. Excuse me. Nothing further, Mr. Paoli, right?
No, that's it.
All right. Thank you for catching me, board members. I must open it to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to be heard in this application? Anthony, is there anyone? No one with their hands up?
How many folks, just?
I don't see any number here on my screen, Anthony, in terms of how many are out there. Do you have any? 34 attendees? And no hands up? Okay. I'm gonna close the public portion, and it's back to us, board members. Have a motion in this application?
I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch? Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. Thank you. Your application is dismissed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Yes. He logged out? All right. So Anthony, Jeff logged out. Is, is there anything else he has to do to get back in, so to speak?
Using the phone.
And is Mr. Miskovich?
Is Mr. Miskovich in there yet? So Mr. Alfieri, what you're setting up, we're gonna try to attend to a few technical issues here.
No problem.
Mr. Miskovich indicates he's on the phone, ending in number 1031, but the problem, again, is he cannot be a panelist, right? He can only listen.
Can you tweak me so I can see what's happening here? Thank you. All right.
We use smoke signals and stones. Really?
Hey, Anthony, there's a, there's a concept floating around. I think, I just heard Evan say, if they have a cellphone, can, can they access it by virtue of their cellphone? That could work? The camera on the cellphone? Mr. Alfieri, as, as we're trying to figure out what to do with Mr. Miskovich, who is our traffic guy, I was, I'm presuming you, you were gonna put on traffic testimony tonight?
Yes. That would be our second witness tonight.
Your second witness? How many witnesses do you, do you have tonight?
We have Mr. Borden, who's going to respond to some of the things that were raised at the last meeting, then the traffic, and then the last would be the engineer, Mr. McFarland.
Can he listen to us, Tony? Is he listening to us now? Miskovich?
You know, my, my, let me, let's, the suggestion--
Yeah, my suggestion is, is although it's not for us necessarily, is it a big issue for you to switch your order in presentation, and then we'll take a break and--
No, that's fine.
All right.
All right, so we're, we're back on the record. We're gonna move, move forward for the moment, and hopefully the technical issues work themselves out. Mr. Alfieri, before you begin, there was, there was some public comment last week, and there were some items that were written in, questions and answers. I suspect some of those made them, made their way to you. There was also a request to open the meeting to the public before we begin. I am disinclined to do that. I do not want to open it up unless you have an overwhelming objection to convince me otherwise. I would prefer this evening that you continue with your witnesses. Notwithstanding, we have some technical issues to resolve, and then after you complete your entire case, at that point, then I would open it up to the public, and I'm hoping all of the public that is out there right now, I see there are 36 attendees, four panelists, with a total participant number of 40, so I'm hoping they are all listening and paying attention to this so that they take appropriate notes of the witnesses of which they have concerns about, so that they can articulate their questions clearly and succinctly and within the parameters as provided by the rules governing these proceedings. And with that, I think that will be a more efficient use of our time and more efficient use of our board's time, and it will not compel me to impose upon the board, keeping them here after our typical 10:30 mark of time. In, in rare circumstances, we will go beyond 10:30, but I do not think it is fair to our volunteers to force our volunteer board members to stay here after 11:00. So with that, Mr. Alfieri, and I suspect you agree, that it would be in everybody's best interest, efficient, with an efficient use of time, for you to present your entire case, and then we'll open it up to the public.
Yes, we agree with your approach. That would be the best way to go forward tonight. For the record, Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant, before we start, I want to, housekeeping, I want to make sure, we only had five members last meeting, two people were not here, and I want to make sure that they're qualified to vote.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so one, one, and were you here last time? So I only had five on the transcript, that's why I'm--
Someone's still out.
Krather was in there.
Okay, so that's good. All right, so we have seven tonight that are qualified.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you. Great. Just by way of introduction, I told you who our witnesses were gonna be. We also have everyone here, experts, to answer questions when we get to that later this evening. Since the last meeting, I did submit a, to the board, a copy of the Eastman Agreement that Mr. Cardinali referred to, that allows the cross-access-and-parking between Six Flags and the Adventure Crossing proper project. And then finally, just to attempt to save time, the solar discussion, which got way out of hand, way past what we expected it to be, I want, and you'll hear this in response to questions, I'm sure, by the various experts when they, when those questions are raised, that Cogen facility, or structure, has nothing to do with this project. The power, it has nothing to do with the, although we'll have solar, it's standard solar, it has nothing to do with all the other issues that were discussed on ancillary projects that'll come forward. If and when that Cogen building is built, there'll be an application to the board, there'll be public notice, and there'll be a hearing at some future date, but this project tonight has nothing to do with that. And you'll hear that from experts if and when you need to.
If I may, Mr. Alfieri, I just want to cover one more nuance of, of how we will proceed. I don't know, perhaps you have a better idea as to how long all of the testimony of your, of your witnesses will be, and we cannot predict clearly how long the Q and A may go back and forth between the board and your witnesses, but for the sake of the discussion, if we complete your testimony, and I'm, and I'm thinking that if we complete by 10:30, that is not gonna leave us sufficient time to deal with public comment, so I am, I will then be inclined to bring everybody back for public comment on another day, unless, unless you're gonna somehow coordinate your, your testimony, because I'm not gonna short shift the public either. I want to give them fair, fair chance to ask their questions, but if it ends up late for you to complete, then we are-- for you to complete, then we are gonna have to come back to attend public session. You have a thought process on that?
Our, our direct testimony will not take till 10:30 under any circumstance, unless you want it to. But, but our direct testimony will not be lengthy. Ian has 10 minutes maybe, traffic maybe 10 minutes, engineering's five minutes. It's really just to discuss, that's with no questions from the board, just in terms of testimony, so we should be okay.
All right, fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Alfieri.
Thank you. Ian?
Good evening.
Do you, you remain under oath or you're reswearing?
Well, Mr. Borden, we, you know, we'd like to do it again. You've raised your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you have present before the board, represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
You've been previously sworn in this application as well, and your credentials have been accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Borden, since the last hearing, and obviously you testified during the bulk of the last hearing, you had an opportunity to consider some of the questions that were raised by the board members and the public. We have various exhibits that you have submitted that we're gonna discuss in a moment, and you're gonna testify to some of those points that were raised at the last meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you want to, just generally, what did you hand out to the board? A package of how many sheets?
I gave to the board a 14-page exhibit, which are also in PDF form, to show on the screen. We had introduced Exhibits A1 through A4 at the April 7th meeting, and we've added Exhibits A5 through A14 for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
All have been premarked.
And we'll discuss them as we go.
That's correct.
Okay, and Mr. Borden, so can you, you, you want to?
Yes.
Go ahead. I have a checklist, but if you miss something, I'll ask you.
I'm sure. Thank you. Yes, as Mr. Alfieri indicated, my, I'll be brief this evening. My goal tonight is to answer questions and to provide additional information as raised by the board and/or public. I basically have six categories of comments. I'm gonna start with the various public comments that we, that we received in writing. We had received through the board secretary's office emails from, from three individuals. And I'd like to go through those item by item. I'll be very quick. We have two emails from Ms. Argenti. I recall she was the objector from, from whiting. We have, her first comment was that there is a notice of violation from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection dated February 16th on 2021 regarding Lot 4. Lot 4 is, is one of the three existing properties as part of Phase 1. It's a lot that's located along Monmouth Road in close proximity to the 195 ramp. We had received that notice of violation. We had provided a response to that by letter and email on February 26th, as dictated by the DEP, and we're awaiting their response. But as far as we are concerned, the matter is, is closed.
And there'll be some writing from the DEP closing it at some point?
That's correct. Well, one of the items that, that is pending from the DEP on that, on that particular lot is a letter of interpretation. There is a small area of wetlands on the eastern portion of that lot. I actually did speak to the project manager from DEP today, and I was informed that the letter of interpretation is being finalized and mailed to me. So that certainly is, that was one of the items. There was some, that was one of the items of the notice.
What does that mean? Just to, are, what, what does that mean in terms of the fact that you've addressed it and it's closed?
Well, I could, I could, the, the particular notice of violation on that lot was that there, this, there was disturbance made to that portion of the small area of wetlands. So the first step to addressing that is to delineate and have verified the limit of wetlands, and that's the LOI that's being issued. The next step is to either remove disturbance or legalize the disturbance. And what we are seeking and what we've been talking to the, so that's part one. The LOI is part one of satisfying the, the NOV. Part two is to either legalize the disturbance or remove the disturbance, and it's our intent to legalize the disturbance. We have determined that the wetlands is isolated in our analysis of the topography and hydrology. And it's our intent, as we have indicated to the DEP, that we're gonna seek a general permit 6 to fill. A general permit 6 allows you to fill up to one acre of isolated wetland. We're seeking to fill approximately 4 tenths of an acre.
Mr. Borden and Mr. Alfieri, I take it that those items would need to be attended to as part of a resolution in any event? So it becomes, as I would understand it, an enforcement issue and subject to resolution compliance, and your application would proceed, I take it, with that understanding?
It's an outside agency approval like any, any of the others. That's correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
The second item was another notice of violation with the same date on Lot 2. Lot 2 is the original and rear portion of Phase 1. That notice of violation was regarding some, we have active LOI and a transitionary waiver, permits on that on Lot 2 that remain valid. They feel that there was some disturbance made in, to the order of less than a tenth of an acre to areas not permitted to be disturbed by the existing transitionary waiver. We have already made application with my response dated February 26th for a amended transitionary waiver. So we have actually filed for the permit to resolve that small area disturbance that the state has identified. And again, that's an outside agency approval, similar with Lot 4. The third item was Ocean County Soil Conservation District. There was, included was a list of field notes and notices of violation. We did discuss this at the first hearing on April 7th. There is a long list of notices of violation from Ocean County Soil Conservation District. That is not unusual in working with that agency. All of those notices of violation, as they are issued, are addressed, be it field work that's required to satisfy any particular concern they have, or as we have obtained recertifications of plans. In some cases, those notices refer to construction activities they'd like to see changed and fixed. In some cases, they'll, they'll see on the plans where a change is made. For example, the amendments that we're, we're proposing to this board, they asked us to have that plan recertified. So we, we actually received that recertification for plans that the board has in front of them on April 7th. Interestingly, coincidentally, the same night of our last hearing, but there is no current, they've, they've, there is no stop work orders issued. There is no, we continue to work on the site and work with that office. They perform their inspections and we do what they ask.
And I, I assume the same concept of an outside agency approval would apply here as well?
Yes, but in this case, we already have it.
You've already complied?
We, well, we've already received it on April 7th. And we can provide a copy to the board. I actually have a copy here if you'd like. The fourth item was questioning the traffic impacts from Phase 2, and Mr. Ray will address that in, in his testimony. And, and the last item was, and these were two different emails, but I just kind of lumped them all into one response. The last item was impervious cover requirements. The, Ms. Argenti was questioning our use of the HCMU zone requirements to calculate the impervious coverage. She quoted in her, or included a copy in her objection of the highway commercial zone, but did not include and maybe is not aware, as I had testified at the April 7th meeting, under the HCMU zone, in order to qualify for the HCMU zone treatment, one must qualify as a tract. Please recall that I testified that the overall Adventure Crossing project meets the tract requirements, and it's those standards that dictate and the impervious coverage requirements and the building coverage requirements and our compliance with those, as I testified to on April 7th, remains valid.
Mr. Peters, I want to jump in real quick on this one before we move on. Do you agree with that assessment by Mr. Borden?
Grudgingly from Mr. Borden, yeah. Yes, I do.
Thank you. May I proceed, Mr. Peters?
Secondly, we received, there was an email sent by Mr. Scatucci, Scatuccio, with two comments. Recall, Mrs. Scatuccio was resident of Jackson, lives in the Four Seasons off of County Line Road. Not that that's relevant, but the first one was power generating. He was questioning the power generator. And as Mr. Alfieri stated, there is no power generator proposed in, in, in Phase 1. We are simply proposing solar panels, solar power to augment electricity delivered to the site by JCP and L. So there's, there's just nothing more to say on that at all. And then secondly, he questioned the diesel truck traffic and the air quality as it relates to the warehouses. That again is not part of this application. The warehouses are in Phase 2, which was, has been approved by the planning board, and his, his comment on the diesel trucks are just not relevant to this Phase 1 application. Then lastly, we have Ms. McKinney, who lives along Holly Tree Court, right next to Phase 2. And there were seven comments. Items 1 through 3 were traffic questions, which Mr. Ray will address in his direct testimony. Number 4 was construction access. There is no construction. Let the record be clear that there is no construction access permitted to Anderson Road. That includes trucks, company trucks, employees of any company doing work on the site and their personal vehicles, but there is no traffic permitted to Anderson Road. Item number 5 was trees, questioning a tree permit for, for Phase 2. A tree permit was issued by the Township Forester on April 13th for Phase 2. Parking waiver, item number 6, questioning the number of parking spaces. Again, Mr. Ray will address that in his direct testimony. And then lastly, on item, question 7 was the bamboo. Recall that we are proposing a small, narrow screen of bamboo inside the property, private screen, as it were, between two of our proposed uses, the rear of the hotel and the, in Phase 1, and the ball fields, and between those and the warehouses. As I testified on April 7th, we're very well aware that bamboo is an invasive species. We are working with professionals that, that provide this bamboo, and we are, there will be no pesticide used. The bamboo will be planted in a lined PVC fabric-lined trench to ensure that it remains in the narrow buffer that we are seeking to create. So there'll be no pesticides provided, and the invasiveness will be controlled by those, those trenches. I'm gonna, if you don't mind, put up the exhibits. I want to jump to a question from the, from the board. That was item 1 of, of 6. Now we have a, a question raised by, by board members and last week, which was pedestrian access. So we have prepared Exhibit A6, which is a, an illustration of the, of the various walkways that are proposed in the project. Number 6. So just page 6. Page 6. Next one. There we go. So what we have here is the, is Phase 1. We, to, to make it larger so the board can see, we don't show the fields, which are down on the bottom, but what we have here is the blue lines are, are the walkways. Whoops. So what we, what we have here, again, it's the same, same orientation as the early exhibits, A2 and 3 of the site, but you have the main signalized intersection on Pine Drive. Or please recall that will be signalized with crosswalks and pedestrian push buttons. And then we have three separate stop-controlled crosswalks. We have one that connects the convention and air dome directly to the front of the convention. That's when we added, based upon the comments of the board. That was, and then we have a second one farther down between the convention and the ball fields. Both of those will be separately stop-controlled with crosswalks. And then we have a fourth, a third stop-controlled, which is between the hotel and Phase C, which is the easternmost pad buildings along Monmouth Road. Again, that is stop-controlled as well, crosswalk. So that.
What do you mean by stop-controlled and?
Well, you stop signs.
Just stop signs.
Correct.
So I would just ask Mr. Ray, when he comes up?
He will.
To, I would ask him to address why he believes stop signs are sufficient and not some of the enhanced stuff that some of the other applications have talked about.
I understand.
With the lighting.
Don't address that.
It's up to the board to determine, but it should be addressed.
Yes. And then next, just briefly, if you don't mind scrolling through A7 through A14, we'll kind of go quickly. These are architectural exhibits. Some, many of them were presented in the 2019 approvals. But this is A7, which is in the front elevation of the air dome. You see the sports bar and recreation in the front with the air dome in the rear. If you don't mind looking from that main access road, by the way, and then if you go, don't mind going to the next one. This is the corner of the air dome, looking basically from Monmouth Road into the site, and you see the, where you drive up and looking at the, kind of the entrance down, down the wall there, if you don't mind, the next one. This is the, looking from between the Hilton on the main access and the air dome, looking back at the Hilton. So basically looking back towards 195, if you don't mind going, looking to the north basically here, if you don't mind, go to the next one. And then we're just closer to Monmouth Road on the main drive, basically at the signalized intersection. You got the Hilton, and then you have the banquet center on the end of it. Next, please. This is a, an aerial view of the ball fields, looking from, from the rear of the site. The southernmost part of the site, looking back towards Monmouth Road, you see the ball fields, the amenities in the center here, the concession, and then you have the air dome in the distance. Next, please. And then it's, this is a view basically from near the air dome, looking back towards the field. Again, you have the fields, you have the concession building here and the ticket office and offices here for the fields, field parking. Next, please. And then this is the new one that, that we were asked to provide. This is, this is the front of the medical research building, looking again from the main access road. Again, four stories. And then the last one is next, which is, which is basically a side view, slightly farther south of that last view, looking at the medical research, the four-story medical research, and then you could see the six-story parking garage in the, in the rear.
And Ian, just to refresh the board's recollection, the parking garage is lower because the height is not the same per floor, right?
That's correct.
Not the same as the office, the research?
That's correct. So then I, I just have, I guess while we're on the exhibits, let's go to this one. If you don't mind going to Exhibit A5. So page 5. This is a very small item. Thank you. Please recall that Exhibit A4 was, was a enlargement of Phase C, which is the front pads closer to 195, which is to the right, Monmouth Road being along the top. And this is the exhibit where we provided the drive-through and the bus parking. Mr. Miskovich had pointed out to us at the last hearing that our bus parking, which was on the south side of the island, would actually, if you step out of the passenger side of a bus, you'd be stepping onto the island. So he recommended that we move the bus parking to the other side of the island, so this very simply switches the car and the bus parking. That, that's all this does. But we're trying to be responsive to, that was a relevant concern, and we wanted to be responsive. And then the, the final two comments are, there was a discussion brought up by the township planner, board planner, about the, recall that we are asking for variance for the freestanding sign, one of the, the main freestanding sign next to the entrance of Pine Drive. It was approved at 33 feet, and we're seeking 45 feet. But it was noted that the location of that sign, and it is an animated sign, as previously approved by the board, but the location of the sign is less than 200 feet from a traffic signal. So the ordinance under 244, 207, A2, states that no sign displaying the colors of red, green, or yellow shall be permitted within 200 feet of a traffic signal. And, and so additional testimony is warranted because we do need a C2 variance for that. I didn't know the exact dimensions and, and when, at the first hearing. So the, the actual separation of the, the nearest signal. So, uh, the, the actual separation of the, the, the nearer signal to the sign. If you don't mind going to Exhibit A, uh, three. So be sheet three. I don't know if you can, if you can blow it up right in this area, right there, right in the top of the page. Yeah, that's a little more. That's perfect. Thank you. So, so this is the signalized intersection, of course. The sign is located directly in front of the 711, which is this corner, uh, store right there. And we have the signal, uh, poles in the intersection. The nearest signal pole to us, which is on the southeast corner of the new Pine Drive and, uh, Mammoth Road. The signal heads actually face north and south. So, uh, they're aligned with the sign, so that, in my opinion, would not meet the, the definition of this, uh, ordinance section because when you're looking at the traffic light, you're not looking at the sign. You're looking at the edge of the sign. The sign obviously is oriented to see it looking down Mammoth Road. So the, the, when we analyze this ordinance section, we look at the signal that's on the, uh, southeast corner, uh, which contains the signal heads to stop the, uh, eastbound traffic. Uh, and that, that sign is 155 feet from our proposed sign. So the variance that we're seeking would be for 45 feet. We also looked at the details of the sign. The traffic signal heads are located 15 feet above the road. Uh, the bottom of the sign that we're proposing with the increased height is 20 feet off the road. Uh, in addition, the elevation of the ground at the proposed sign is actually, uh, uh, four feet higher than the road underneath the signal heads. So what that means is that there's a vertical separation of, of nine feet, uh, between the top of the, that were between the signal heads and the bottom of our sign. In addition, our sign, uh, besides being 155 feet from that signal, is 45 feet off the travel lane. Because the road has a, uh, a right turn lane to turn in, but, but the actual travel lane that would be stopping at the light for a through movement is 45 feet away. So what we have is, is as you're traveling down Mammoth Road, the sign is 45 feet to your right and 155 feet away from the signal. Uh, in my, and, and it has a separation distance of nine feet. So in, in my opinion, the combination of the sign offset from the travel lane, the distance from the signal heads and the vertical separation of the sign and the, uh, signals, uh, serve to advance the purposes of, of the municipal land use law. Uh, and that this minor deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements and the benefits of the deviation, which, when we analyze the benefits, it's resulting from the entire development, not the sign in particular. That's the definition of a C two variance, uh, substantially weighs any detriment. So I believe we meet the test of the, uh, C two variance for that.
And Ian?
For that variance.
Go ahead. Just one follow-up and then, um, that traffic signal, um, is also required to be permitted by the county, is that correct?
Correct.
So the county also has the opportunity to review and approve the traffic signal location.
Uh, they have. In, in fact, the county, uh, has, has already approved that signal.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Mr. Borden, if you'd be so kind to remind the board what we approved, that, that, what the signage actually is. The sign itself, is it LED readout?
The sign that is approved is LED. It's an animated sign that's 30, 30, 33 feet tall.
But the, the LED face itself, how large is that face?
That's, uh, 458 square feet. Basically 20 feet square. But under the current variance as granted by the board, the 30-foot maximum height, the bottom of the sign is only 10 feet off the ground.
Uh, my, my concern is more the, the, uh, the looms generated by the sign. And if they interfere with one's vision, I, I can appreciate what you're saying about the, 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 the signal heads are below the sign. But the, the, uh, the light, the looms, the generated by the sign, if they overpower, certain colors are, are more, um, adverse to drivers and seeing, you know, street signs, et cetera. Um, I know we already approved the sign. Uh, my, my concern now is with what you're proposing, uh, that this board may be mindful, uh, we can't go back on it, but this board needs to be mindful of, of the sign that's already been approved, the brilliance of it.
I understand.
If it distracts from driving and seeing us, you know, as you approach it, you're gonna, you're gonna be caught more by, depending on what type of colors, et cetera, are permitted with the sign, how it would distract with those, uh, traffic signals. That's my concern.
Understand. And I think that's why it's important for the offset, uh, and the additional height.
Understood.
Mr. Peters, can you address this issue?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Um, Ian, could you repeat the, sort of the geometry? The sign is set back 155 feet from the signal. So if you're within 150 feet of the signal, you're already past it, right?
Yes.
So it's behind you.
Correct.
And as you're driving down the road, how far to the right of a traveled lane is it?
45 feet.
So it's 15 yards that way.
Yes.
So I, I, I just want the board to understand sort of the geometry, the physical geometry of what we're asking for. The reason it's noted as a variance, I apologize, half of you get my back and the other half get my front. I don't have a good side. Um, the ordinance is clear. It's meant for, if, if you think over by the Brookwood Apartments, there's that newer gas station. It has the, um, sign right at the corner so that at the four-way intersection, you can see the gas prices. They're in red. That's what we're trying to get away from. That was the intent originally of this ordinance as a safety ordinance. Unfortunately, given the sheer size of the project, it also applies to this application. So I may take issue with Mr. Borden saying it may not be required. I think it's required, but I think the proofs have been made. And I, I want the board, while it's on the books, we can't say it applies to this and not that, or maybe we should change the ordinance, so it does say that. It applies to this type of zone or this type of road, but it doesn't apply to this situation. That's how it reads right now. So I think it applies to the application, but I want the board to understand the physical. Think about when you're going to the Freehold Raceway Mall. Or if you're going someplace up and down either, uh, 295 or Route One, and you see these types of signs. It's 50 yards before you get to the sign. It's 15 yards to your right. So I, I won't offer a traffic safety comment on it. We may ask Mr. Ray if he thinks it's properly spaced. But I think Mr. Borden's given us the proofs that we need to act affirmatively on the request.
And, and Mr. Ray will provide direct testimony, I hope, uh, supported work on, on this issue as well.
Yes. No, that's fine. Uh, just curious about the sign because it's mentioned, I have familiarity with a lot of these gas stations have the prices listed. Is that included in your sign or is that going to be another sign?
That's another sign that's farther away. And that's a great question because farther to the, uh, west of this sign, uh, it's, maybe we shouldn't have that blown out more, uh, A three. But, um, there is a, a, existing approved freestanding sign for the convenience store. Uh, a tenant sign, as we call it, that we are not seeking to change. That is a sign that's permitted at the maximum, or approved, I'm sorry, at the maximum permitted height of 16 feet, which is the ordinance standard. Uh, but that sign is with, with the gas station, with the, with the red, green, uh, uh, because I think that, in my opinion, that's why the ordinance was written, in part, because the gas station signs, uh, have obviously a lot of reds and greens. But, um, uh, that is more than 200 feet from the signal.
Can you point out just where these two signs would be?
Certainly. Maybe you could blow, uh, enlarge on this a little bit more, if you don't mind. So you can see it here. This, this right here is the freestanding sign that we're discussing. That's the sign that requires variance, what we call the project freestanding sign. The tenant sign is located right there for the 711 use. So the 711 sign is west of the freestanding sign and farther from the signal.
What's the distance between the two?
I believe it's about 60 feet.
And excuse me, Mr. Borden, I'm sorry. Um, for us in Zoom land, we can't see your, um, pointer. So just to make sure the record's clear, can I just have like two landmarks of where the signs will be? Like across the street from Wawa or something like that? Or if you don't want it in there, it's fine.
Yeah, they're, they are across from Wawa. Um, the, the, uh, the, the proposed 711 sign is basically directly across the street from the existing Wawa sign. Uh, with the, again, with the freestanding sign, the, the project freestanding sign, I think it's actually, I'm trying to remember, I had the dimension in my head about the separation of the signs earlier today. I think it's closer to 80 feet is the diff, the distance between the signs. Okay, yeah. So, so it's about 90 feet between the signs. Thank you. Uh, I just have one very small final comment, which was the question raised about roof-mounted solar panels and does that have any impact on building heights? The answer is no. In discussing with the solar engineers, any roof-mounted solar has a height of only one foot. Uh, basically the panels are prone one foot above the surface of a roof. The township ordinance doesn't even regulate roof-mounted solar panels, doesn't mention them. But even if it did, uh, our heights are not so close in tolerance to the ordinance that even if it were counted against the height, we would still be within the height, uh, maximums for each building.
Actually, a question for the chair then, uh, actually for clarification, Ian. I think that was more specific towards the parking structure, where you're not only going to be one foot above the parapet wall on a parking structure on the top, correct? It was, it was how much higher above the parapet or the top height is, does the solar canopy have to be?
On, on the roof.
On this, on the parking garage, not the building roofs, the parking garage.
Well, the, the, the solar, um, the ground mounted panels have a maximum height of 15 feet.
No, I understood that. But if you're, if you're, if you're indicating that your parking garage is 60-foot high or whatever the height is.
Oh, the parking garage.
Parking garage, yes. So if your, if your parking garage is 55 or 60-foot high, how much higher is the solar structure on top of that? And I think you just, I think the, the question there was make sure you don't require any additional variances for that height.
In, in that, no, the maximum permit, permitted height of the solar, um, I'm sorry, of the parking garage is 90 feet.
So you're well within that.
Even if we add it to 15 to the, the 60.
You need a variance in general for the parking garage. Be adding a structure on it, it should, it all encompasses, right? One and the same.
I don't, I don't even know that we're proposing ground mounted solar on top of the parking garage, to be honest with you.
But the, to answer your question, Mr. Gartner, the, the sign, the, the, the structure and the use is not, the use is not a permitted use. The structure itself will conform to the height standards of the ordinance.
Okay, fair enough.
That's all we have of Mr. Borden.
Thank you. Board members, any questions of Mr. Borden? Professionals, any further questions of Mr. Borden? I think then the next witness that you would like to go to would be your traffic engineer.
Yeah, I know, Mr. McFarland.
Mr. McFarland, right? Yeah, Graham?
Mr. McFarland, you're standing and raising your hand. Do somebody swear affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Um, if you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation, please.
Sure, Graham McFarland, M A C F A R L A N E. Professional engineer, professional planner, certified municipal engineer, uh, principal, PDS. Uh, I'm appearing tonight offering, uh, engineering testimony. I've appeared before this board many times.
Your credentials are accepted, so thank you.
And, and Mr. McFarland, you, you, in conjunction with Mr. uh, Borden and your staff, prepared the plans that are being presented this evening, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And, um, uh, as the engineer, can you describe for the board how the stormwater management system was designed and how it will operate?
Sure, just referring to, uh, A three, which is, which is up on the screen. Um, the site will have a, a, a series of detention basins. There are, there was one at the front of the site, which also actually has a, a second small component, uh, as well to take runoff from the county road. And there are two other basins at the, at the back end of the site to take runoff from the, um, southern part of the, of, of the property. When the stormwater management system is designed, uh, essentially we are required to reduce the runoff uh, in the post-developed condition as compared to the pre-developed condition. Uh, this site, by the nature of its pre-developed, uh, topography and condition of, of being wooded, produce a very, very, very low, uh, amount of, of runoff in the existing or the pre-developed condition. Uh, we are required to design the detention basins in accordance with the New York District Stormwater Management Rule and local ordinance to make sure that the peak rate of runoff will be reduced, uh, in a post-developed condition. Uh, so the discharge from the site will be less in a developed condition than it is in the, uh, in the pre-developed condition. Two other components that have to be complied with is outlined by the current stormwater rules. Uh, require us to provide water quality, you know, we refer to as qualitative control. And we also have to, have to provide and promote groundwater recharge on the site so that water, uh, you know, that falls, runoff that's created, has the ability to recharge the groundwater, uh, a- as similar as possible to the existing condition. Again, serving to reduce the amount of runoff in the post-developed condition as compared to the pre-developed condition. Uh, this project satisfies all of those criteria by proposing the three, uh, what we call combination infiltration detention basins. Uh, low-intensity storms will, it will enter each detention basin and they will recharge the groundwater uh, within the footprint of each detention basin. Uh, during higher intensity storms, what we refer to as maybe, uh, you know, a 10-year or 100-year storm, there would be some outflow from the, from the basins. But again, they would be lower than any, uh, condition, uh, under the pre-developed scenario. Uh, the site will include, of, of, of course, a series of inlets and piping to convey the collective runoff to the detention basins. Uh, also important to note that the project does have to comply with Soil Conservation District standards, which has, uh, you know, which has their own set of standards that, that regulate and govern the outfalls from the, uh, from the particular project. Uh, and as Mr. Borden stated, the plan has already been certified by the local Soil Conservation District, so the design is in compliance with those regulations as well.
To the extent that Mr. Borden crossed the line from planner to engineer, uh, you were at the last hearing and you were at the hearing tonight and you heard Mr. Borden's testimony. Can you confirm that any of the, if, if something actually crossed the line from planning to engineering, that what Mr. Borden indicated and testified to is accurate?
Well, as, as you said, Mr. Borden and I both have both collaborated on this project. So the duties sometimes get a little, get a little shared between, uh, what he does on, during a particular design, uh, stage and, and what I'm actually overseeing during a particular design stage. But, uh, the important fact here is that the design is proposed in accordance with applicable regulations. Uh, again, we have three detention basins plus a, a small little sliver at the, uh, at the front of the site at, at the Route 537, which was necessary to collect, uh, some runoff from Route 537 when the final requirements for that widening were determined and approved by the county.
And you've also had an opportunity to review the reports issued by Mr. Peters and Mr. Hill, have you not?
I have.
And from the engineering point of view, um, are you confident that you can address all of the comments, technical comments in those reports and that as a condition of approval, they will in fact be addressed?
Yes, and just for the board's information, uh, we had submitted a revised report to Mr. Hill, Hill earlier this week as, as he had requested at the last hearing. I'm not sure if he got a chance to take a look at it yet, but we did update the report to, uh, to address most of his previous comments related to the stormwater management.
And, and all of the technical comments will be addressed as a condition of approval if this board were to grant the approval?
Correct.
So the engineering, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hill, will you address?
Uh, uh, Mr. McFarland's correct. I received that revised report via email, uh, yesterday, yesterday morning. Uh, I had a chance to go through it. Some of the comments were addressed. We still have some details we have to work out. I don't believe any of them will have an adverse impact on the layout as it's currently proposed, which is fairly common for these types of applications. There's always cleanup during resolution compliance. Uh, but I also want to point out to the board, in addition to the three excavated bases that they're proposing, there's four larger subsurface basins underneath the ball fields.
Underneath?
Underneath the fields, correct.
I don't quite understand how that works.
Graham, you want to discuss that?
Sure, certainly. Underneath the, uh, the turf fields, there's basically a system of under drains.
I'll say that again?
A system of under drains beneath the, the ball fields, turf fields. Uh, the turf fields have a layer of stone underneath them and then have, we have perforated pipe in there, uh, in that stone layer so that as runoff, uh, is, is either directed towards a side or percolates through the turf field, it gets managed before it gets... through the turf field, it gets managed before it gets conveyed to the detention basins.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hill, any further comments or concerns in regards to the testimony on engineering?
No, I just wanted to point out that, you know, I haven't had a, I haven't performed a complete review on what I received yesterday morning, but the, the, the bulk, I would say the larger issues were addressed, and we just have to shake out some details.
Anything significant in there in terms of what they're applying for in terms of the variances that they're seeking that we need to be concerned about to address in relation to those variances?
No, there will likely be, there may be some minor tweaks to some of the storage capacity of the infiltration basins, but we'll have, we can discuss that, the engineers can, we can discuss that as part of a condition of resolution compliance.
Lastly, just, just for the record, of course, the entirety of this stormwater management system will be owned and operated by the property owner.
The, I guess the question that pops up is, is the parking garage, which is really the focus of the variance application, does that affect any of the stormwater management or infiltration calculations that you have to go?
No, because what was previously proposed there was asphalt parking, so even though you have four stories of parking, four layers of parking, or I'm sorry, six stories of parking, you still have the same amount of square footage of impervious cover on the very top level.
Thank you. Anything further from Mr. McFarland?
That's all.
Anything from the board? Questions from the board? Nothing further from you, Mr. Hill, Mr. Peters, we good? All right. Then with that, Mr. Faire, before we proceed, I'd like to assess our technical difficulty with Mr. Miskovich, so with that, I would like to take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back on board. Let's, I'm looking at that clock, it says about 8:14, so maybe 8:25 we come back, can we convene?
Thank you.
Thank you, we are adjourned. They have worked some magic out here, so we're going to do a little test with, with Frank to see if he in fact can hear us and if we'll be able to hear him. Frank, are you out there? What's it look like to you, Anthony? Frank, can you hear us? If you can, the game plan was, we were going to proceed with testimony, assuming you can hear it, and if you could hear it but not speak back to us, we would then complete testimony from the applicant's traffic engineer, and then you would then reply later, we'd hook you up to a phone, put you through Evan's phone for a purpose of cross-examination counter testimony, that at least is the preliminary idea, but we then were hopeful, thinking that you might be able to hear us and talk back. Can you hear us and can you talk back? I'm not, I'm not seeing anything here, Anthony, how about you? Frank, you got to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Oh, Frank!
Can you hear me?
Frank, is that you?
Yes.
All right, you obviously can hear us, good, all right.
Okay, sorry about the confusion.
All right, are you, are you ready to go?
Yes, I am.
All right, good deal. All right, then, don't go anywhere and don't press any buttons.
All right. Yep. Mr. Miskovich, you, you're raising your right hand, correct?
Yes.
And Mr. Ray at the same time. Each of you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, question, or comment you're about to present before the board, the applicant, and the public shall represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I do.
Frank, you first, please, talk who you.
Yes, I do. Frank Miskovich, Board Traffic Engineer.
Mr. Ray, you've been previously sworn.
Not in this application, Sean.
So go ahead, sorry.
Licensed professional engineer with McDonough and Ray Associates, I'll be doing the traffic engineering testimony this evening for the applicant.
Your credentials are accepted, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Ray, you and your office have been involved in the Adventure Crossing Project since inception, is that correct?
Yes, it's been a while, but we have been, yes.
And you've, you've prepared the various reports that were provided in support of the, the prior approvals of all these sections so far?
That's correct.
And you've also interacted with both Monmouth and Ocean County planning boards as it relates to the traffic signal and other traffic improvements of 537?
Yes, we have.
All right, and you also issued a report, I believe in March of this year, a traffic report that Mr. Miskovich refers to in his March 31st report?
Correct.
So why don't we start with traffic first?
Okay.
And then we'll talk about parking.
Yeah, I thought it would probably be a good idea, since we're in front of the zoning board this evening, and if I'm not mistaken, the other applications that I testified on were in front of the planning board, so I just want to give a brief overview of what's happened with respect to the improvements that are proposed for the two traffic signals out on Monmouth Road that will be impacted by the project and for which we have designed some significant improvements. First, at the intersection of Route 537 and Pine Drive.
Excuse me, Mr. Ray, should, you want to, you want to plan up so you can?
Yeah, that would.
A3, please.
No, that's fine. At the signalized intersection where the existing jug handle is located at Route 537 and Pine Drive, significant improvements are proposed for that location. Specifically, on the approach to Monmouth Road from the Adventure Crossing Project, we are going to widen that approach to four lanes. There's going to be a double right turn lane, because we do expect the majority of our traffic will be oriented back to Interstate 195. There's going to be a double right turn lane that's under traffic signal control, then there will also be a through lane for crossing movements to Pine Drive, and a left turn lane for traffic movements going back to the west on Monmouth Road. So that's going to be a four-lane approach, there's going to be a new traffic signal installed at that location, and on the opposite side of the road, Pine Drive, will be widened and restriped from a one-lane approach, which is what it currently is, to a two-lane approach. And with those improvements, we can get an acceptable level of service for the four different peak hours that we studied for the project. The design of those improvements have been reviewed by both the Monmouth County and Ocean County Engineering Departments, they've approved the signal design and the improvements that we've proposed, so that's pretty well set. Off the map, what you can't see, there are repair.
Before you do that, can you talk about the expanded jug handle there?
Oh, sure, well, yeah, it's, the expanded jug handle will actually also serve as access to the project. That's the roadway that will come in off of eastbound Monmouth Road, on parallel to Monmouth Road through the project. That will increase the stacking, you know, for people using what is the existing current jug handle to get across the road to Pine Drive. We're going to, it's going to go through a signalized intersection, which we will discuss in a little bit more detail as I get into my testimony, but we have significantly expanded the jug handle to accommodate both the crossing movements to Pine Drive and the access movements into the project from eastbound Monmouth Road. The other traffic signal that I discussed before is actually off the page down to the west, as you may know, there are a pair of reversing jug handles for U-turn movements And we are going to be improving that intersection as well, the jug handle is going to be expanded, it's going to be widened, and we're going to provide for a double left turn lane for U-turn movements that are traveling west on Monmouth Road that are going to have to reverse direction and come back to the east. So the jug handle is being expanded, it is being widened to two lanes for a double left turn lane, and as I've indicated, a significant improvement to that location is proposed as well. And again, that's been reviewed by the two county engineering staffs, and we've reached an agreement on what needs to be done in order to have that intersection operate at an acceptable level of service.
And, and as it relates to that western jug handle, the applicant actually had to acquire land to be dedicated to Monmouth County to expand that jug handle.
That is correct.
And, and that has been, the closing took place and the land has been conveyed.
That's my understanding.
I did the closing, so it happened. Go ahead, Mr. Ray.
Okay, so, again, I just wanted to bring those, you know, facts out to the zoning board, just in case everybody was unaware of what was being proposed in terms of the traffic improvements that have been proposed by the applicant. The balance, I guess, of what I need to talk about this evening deals with the internal circulation, the pedestrian plan that Mr. Borden discussed in a little bit of detail during his testimony. I was at the last meeting on April 7th, when we heard the concerns and the comments from the board members and from Mr. Miskovich regarding the pedestrian circulation. I, I think Ian has gone over that in a little bit of detail, I have gotten together with him on the pedestrian plan, I believe it's, it's, it's sound, it's logical. I think the one thing we still need to do, and I believe one of the board, it might have been Mr. Gertner brought it up earlier in the evening, one thing we still need to do is we need to determine exactly what the crosswalks are going to look like, are they going to be just plain striped or thermoplastic crosswalks? I've recommended that they be constructed in a textured pavement, so that they're a little bit more visible to traffic that's utilizing the roadways within the site, you can see the crosswalks. I think we need to sit down with your professionals and just work the details out as to what the crosswalks will look like, what the signage will look like, but I do agree that in those three locations that Mr. Borden discussed in some detail, that the stop signs and the crosswalks, along with proper signage, would be appropriate for those locations as far as providing safe pedestrian movements across the roadways at those locations. And I say that because after you look at the site plan and you see where the majority of the traffic movements will take place, the, the key intersection that needs to be treated with, you know, a lot of more detail is that signalized four-way intersection, where we are going to be providing a traffic signal, crosswalks across all four corners of the intersection, pedestrian signals and pedestrian push buttons, that's going to get the full treatment, because that's where the traffic volumes will be highest.
So, so Mr. Graham, just to emphasize on that, because that's what I sort of touched on, and Mr. Peters and I have the, some of the benefit of being part of some of the planning board testimony, can you just focus on the fact as to why that, the intersection you just spoke about?
Yes.
Gets the full treatment, and the other ones that you're talking about, while you talk about some differentiation with pavement and the like, are sufficiently, sufficient in your opinion, at least?
Okay.
With the differentiation in the stop signs? Thank you.
Okay, if this exhibit can be blown up just a little bit so that we can, if that's possible? Okay, that's good. The four-way intersection that we're discussing that gets the traffic signal and the full treatment is where it's going to be the heaviest intersection within the site, it's going to accept traffic from the parking garage, which is almost 1,100 spaces, plus all of the other surface parking. There are a little bit over 1,800 parking spaces that are located to the east of the roadway, which is parallel to Monmouth Road.
Mr. Ray, if I may, is that A6 that you have up there? I'm thinking A6 might be more helpful to the board.
Is it A3?
And to the, and to the public, because you laid out in A6, a pedestrian walkway exhibit.
We can go back to the pedestrian walkway exhibit, I think that's A6, we can, I can use that, if that's easier for everybody to see and to understand, because it's got the blue lines on it.
Exactly, yes, thank you.
Yep.
Anthony, can you, yeah, all right, thank you.
Is this it?
No.
Or am I going colorblind?
No.
Okay. The, the, the blue lines represent the pedestrian paths, the sidewalks, that's, that's pretty much perfect, right there, and maybe we just need to show the crossing down by the ball fields, if it can be shrunk just.
I don't mean to be a pain, Mr. Graham, but that, that intersection that Mr. Gertner was referring to, that real intense intersection, yeah, thank you, now you have me reoriented, thank you.
Yeah, that's the four-way intersection in the middle of the project where it's going to experience the highest traffic volumes, that's why signalization will be required, and crosswalks across all four corners. We do anticipate there will be a significant amount of pedestrian traffic from the hotels, the convention center, the medical research facility, and the recreational building, a lot of these people will probably want to cross to park the restaurants and the convenience store that's at the corner. So we do, that's getting the full treatment with respect to the traffic signal, the ped signals, pedestrian push buttons, everything up to current ADA standards. The other locations are in areas where traffic volumes are going to be significantly lower. The crosswalk that is proposed from the garage across to the convention center, again, is in an area where the east of that location, really, the only traffic volumes on this section of the road will be going to the parking spaces that are down by the ball fields, and there are also some parking spaces adjacent to the convention center, but the traffic volumes in that area will be significantly lower than they are up at that four-way intersection. The same holds true for the, the crossing down by the ball fields, again, the volumes in this area are significantly lower, the stop signs with appropriate signage and, and appropriate design for the crosswalks will be sufficient, in my estimation, to handle that safely. And the same holds true for the last location, where there will be stop signs and a crosswalk over toward the access toward the Phase 2 warehouse buildings, again, the volumes will be lower, and the stop signs with the appropriate crosswalks signage will be sufficient to handle that activity safely. So that's, that's essentially what we've come up with.
What would the speed limit be on those internal roads?
Excuse me?
Is there a speed limit on those internal roads?
We haven't established that yet, but they are local roads, so 25 miles per hour would be appropriate, we could probably go, if they're private, they're all going to be private, right?
Private.
We could post it lower than, 25 is the statutory speed limit for local roads, but we, we could post something lower, since they are private roads.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just thinking, if, you hope all goes as well, you can have a lot of people and a lot of kids, so.
Right.
Always better.
Okay.
And, and I, we may have discussed this, maybe not here, but elsewhere, that we were going to give the town Title 39 jurisdiction to enforce traffic safety issues.
You could say that.
Okay, so, yeah, so whatever speed limit the board's comfortable with, we certainly are comfortable with.
So, so the, the other thing I want to move on to is the, the parking situation, because as, has been calculated, the big issue here is the parking requirement for the convention center. The municipal ordinance requires 20 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet, and that calculation comes out to approximately 2,200 parking spaces being required for the convention center. After doing some research on this, you know, ratio, looking at it in more detail, and specifically looking at the latest research that the Urban Land Institute has published in their last publication entitled Shared Parking, which came out in 2020, it, it's my opinion that the municipal ordinance of 20 spaces per 1,000 square feet is pretty much on the high side, it may be related to some old standard that may have been at there years ago, but just to give you an example of what the current recommendation from the ULI is, the current recommendation is six spaces per 1,000 square feet instead of 20 spaces per 1,000 square feet that's required by ordinance. So there's a, quite a bit of discrepancy, and like I said, the latest research indicates that the parking requirements for a convention center are significantly lower than what is required by the township ordinance. Having said that, if you look at Mr. Borden's zoning chart, we have not used the six space per 1,000 square feet ULI recommendation, we've been a little bit more conservative, we've used 10 spaces per 1,000 square feet, because we want to make sure, and my, make sure that he doesn't have any parking problems on site, and so the parking calculations that are shown on Mr. Borden's zoning table are based on 10,000. on 10,000, 10 spaces per 1,000 square feet instead of six, which the ULI recommendation is. And given those factors, we do believe that there's a little over 1,800 parking spaces that are in, that's in the area, again, to the, one thing I wanted to make sure of was we didn't need or use any of the parking that's associated with the two areas where we have pad sites up along Monmouth Road. Those are standalone areas. We don't want anybody parking over there and coming across to the convention center or the recreation building. We want to make sure that the 1,800 parking spaces to the east of this parallel roadway, the expanded jug handle, if you will, we wanted to make sure that that parking number, those 1,823 spaces, if I'm not mistaken, can support the uses that we have on the east side of that road. And in doing a little bit of a shared parking calculation, i- it appears as though we have approximately 82% of what is required by ordinance if you accept our 10 space per 1,000 square feet calculation for the convention center. So, we're, we, we are going to have to discuss some of the shared parking that's going to require, which I've considered in my analysis, and which is why I believe the 1,823 spaces will be adequate to serve that area. And just going into the shared parking, I've looked again at the ULI studies. The convention center is going in the spring and in the fall, and actually in the winter. The anticipated usage of the convention center, based on the research that's been done in the summer, looks like it's going to be about 50% utilization in the summer. The higher months are going to be February, March, November, December, and so there's going to be that factor to consider in terms of the overall parking demand. The ball fields, of course, the synthetic fields, they're going to be busiest in the warmer weather, summer, I guess some parts of the spring and the fall as well, but they probably will not coincide, not probably, they won't coincide with the peak times of the year for the convention center as far as parking is concerned. The medical research facility is going to have 150 medical researchers, as Mr. Cardinali has testified to. They're going to basically be on the site weekdays, Monday through Friday. I don't know what kind of activity on weekends. There's going to be less activity, as I understand it, on the weekends. So, the parking demand associated with the medical research facility would be lower on the weekends when we need that parking or the other recreational uses on the site, which will peak on the weekends, whether it's the ball fields or the indoor recreation center. So, when you, you weigh all of these factors together and you, you understand that there's a, not only a seasonal difference in terms of the peak parking that's generated by the different uses, but there's also daily, and there's weekend and weekday off peaks for the different uses. And given the fact that we're at 82% of what would be required, I believe we're going to have adequate under that shared parking scenario. We will have adequate parking on the east side of that roadway for those uses. It is not in my client's interest to provide insufficient parking for that area, and I, we've discussed this, we've gone over it. I, I trust the ULI numbers. Again, we've used a ratio even higher than the ULI number in order to determine what we believe is the proper number of parking spaces, and I guess I can't explain it any more than that. Given those factors, I think the 1,823 parking spaces.
Adequate. Now, John, the, the parking for the retail restaurants that are on the main road, they all conform, if you segment them out, they conform.
Actually, we need variances for those areas as well. I think Mr. Miskovich in his report discussed those areas, but he also feels, again, because we, we need small variances in terms of the number of parking spaces for the pad sites on the west side of Pine Drive and the east side of Pine Drive. But I, I think in Mr. Miskovich's report, he also agrees that because of the fact there is going to be a significant amount of pedestrian activity from the recreational uses, who are going to be crossing at the four-way intersection, walking to the restaurants and the uses on the other side of the road, we have adequate parking. And I'm, I'm convinced we do as well, too. They're relatively small variances.
And one final question relating to the, the variance associated with the, the site identification sign and its proximity to the traffic signal. You heard the testimony earlier, and do you have an opinion as to whether that, that sign will not interfere or, or in any way impact one's view of the traffic signal?
Yes, I've heard Mr. Borden's testimony, and again, just to reiterate and go over what he testified to, that sign is going to be significantly higher than the level of the traffic signals that are on Monmouth Road. Not only that, it's going to be 45 feet off the roadway, and it's going to be 155 feet away from the closest signal that a, a motorist would see traveling along Monmouth Road, particularly in an eastbound direction. And we're a little bit short of that 200 feet figure that's required by ordinance, but given the offset of 45 feet off the travelway and the separation between the bottom of our sign and the traff, top of the traffic signals, I concur with his testimony, and I also concur with what Mr. Peters said. It's, it's my understanding that a lot of these ordinance really had more to do with the fact that a lot of gas stations are located at the corner of a signalized intersection. They're all over the state, and a lot of the LED signs that have the prices of the fuel now are real close to the traffic signals. And I think the intent of the ordinance was probably more to deal with that situation than, than something like what we're proposing here. So, I, I agree with both of them.
Mr. Rafi, if I may, Mr. Ray, to stay, to stay on that point, I want to follow up on Mr. Costanzo's point. Mr. Costanzo, if I understood his point, he was using a term lumens. Now, I'm no lighting engineer, but the concept I got after listening to Mr. Peters' testimony, and then you concur with him, all right, I think we understand the geometry, where the placement of the sign is. But there's going to be lights, these, these LED lights are going to be on the sign. Now, I'm going to be ridiculous, but I, if I can imagine those little LED lights at a high light intensity, like these flashlights that you can buy, you see the advertisements on, on television where, where they, they shine out at 7,000 something, something, and i- if you're seeing that and it's coming at your face, then, then there's some type of a concern. Now, I don't know if there's a standard that controls that, but that's what I was hearing when I heard Mr. Costanzo's testimony. Is there a way that that gets controlled? There is a standard that applies to that so that they're not so bright that it becomes a problem? If that makes any sense to you.
No, it, it absolutely does. Unfortunately, I'm, I'm not a, a lighting expert, but I absolutely understand the concern. I, I, I can't imagine there wouldn't be an opportunity for us to work with the signing people, the signage people, lower the intensity of the, specifically at night, too, as well, lower the intensity of the LED lights. Is that, that's something I assume we can do.
We could, we could work with your professionals on that. Also, I asked Mr. Cardinali before if we can move the sign a little further away from the traffic signal, and we could bring it to 180, move it 25 feet to the west and not impact anything, then we'd be at 180 feet.
Even better.
Which would even improve the situation. So, those, the combination of those two things hopefully will address, allay your concerns.
The, the next question that was floating around is, folks come in and they're all parking in the parking garage. How do they get from the parking garage to the convention center?
I think we're still, as I understand Mr. Borden's testimony, we're working that out with the designer of the parking garage, but there will be some doors, there will probably be stairs and an elevator that, that, that's going to discharge people so that they don't necessarily have to enter the sidewalk area where the entrance and exit for the vehicles are. They can probably get out more towards the corner. You can design something, if I'm not mistaken, so that the, the stairs and, and there will be a door actually at the, the easterly corner of the parking garage so that they can get out to the sidewalk in an area that's closer to where they have to cross to the convention center. Those are details that do, do have to be worked out, but it's totally a legitimate concern. We understand it, and, and we're going to make sure that there's an easy and a safe and accessible, accessible way for the motorists to get out of the garage onto the sidewalk.
So, what are, in your opinion, and we'll hear from our own expert and perhaps the public, are the minimum parameters that you would recommend as the applicant's traffic engineer to determine a safe transmission of these folks from that parking garage across? Just so, if, if for nothing else, there's some guidance, because if it has to be worked out.
Yeah.
Professionals have to know the parameters.
The minimum parameters would be a, a very visible crosswalk. Like I said, probably textured pavement, maybe even a little bit of a raised crosswalk that would be visible to the motorists. That would be one item. Proper signage, the typical pedestrian crossing signage from the manual and uniform traffic control devices, and, and stop signs. Those three things would be the, the three big parameters, I think, that we'd need to look at, and I, I'm sure we could work those details out with your professionals.
I probably, let me go a step further. So, I mean, and maybe I'm one of the architecturals, you have this, but like, are you going to bet, are you going to have additional lighting on any of the walkways from the parking garage across the back and forth? You know, how is that going to work so that you're not walking out into the dark? I mean, I know it's a little facetious as well.
No, I, I understand, Mr. Gertner. I, I think, and I haven't seen the lighting plan, I don't know if Mr. Borden or Mr. McFarland could, they, they, there will be lighting at that intersection. There will be streetlights, and perhaps we can beef the lighting up at the intersections where the pedestrians cross. As you travel around town and everywhere you go, you normally notice that at the intersections, there's always a streetlight, and we will make sure, I'm sure our lights are going to be decorative and not look like the Cobra Heads that you have out on the utility poles, but we can provide enhanced lighting at the pedestrian crossings.
And the travelway from the parking garage to the pedestrian crosswalk. That's, your client understands what I'm asking. So, the answer is yes.
Can we do some bollard lighting along the? We, we can provide some bollard lighting along the crossway, across the sidewalk on the, I guess it'd be the west side of the parking garage.
Yeah. All right. Just, I'm trying to.
We can, we can do that.
Just trying to put some boundaries together.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
That's all we have of Mr. Ray.
Through the chair, if I may. With regard, with regards to parking, was there any considerations in your calculations for season overlap? You, you mentioned the convention, the peak seasons are summer, fall, winter, et cetera.
Yes.
There are some exterior sports, hopefully they'll have tournaments at, in the back fields that fall into the, go into late fall.
Yes.
Sometimes early spring. Have you made any type of calculations for allowance of parking for seasonal overlap of, of more, of the convention center as well as the athletic fields in the rear being active?
I, I, I have considered that, Mr. Costanzo, and, and again, I think because we use that higher ratio of 10 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet for the convention center, when realistically we're a lot, you know, using the ULI guidelines, we could use six. I think when you weigh that into the equation, too, I think if there is some seasonal overlap and there may be some coincident times when the different uses peak, I think we can handle that. I think it really all comes down to the management of the, the scheduling of those facilities. Mr. Cardinali is going to manage those things, and he's going to have to keep an eye on when these events occur and, you know, try to see, if you will, into the future if there's, if there's going to be a condition where the ball fields, the indoor recreation facility, that can be, that they're all going to be used at the same time, there's going to have to be a traffic management plan, and, and he's going to manage that part of the project. But I, I understand the concern. We've looked at it, but again, I think we probably overestimated the parking demand for the convention center, quite frankly.
May I follow up? Yeah. With regards, I didn't hear any testimony with regards to bus parking. You have these large events, again, with the convention center and also the athletic fields in the rear, which.
Uh, I, I, I think if I'm not mistaken, and Ian, correct me if I'm wrong, I think in the area where I'm pointing to right now, where the pads are over on the east side of Pine Drive, there are some bus parking spaces.
Well, some, but are calculations?
Yeah, four or five of them. Five, five of them.
So, you're allowing for five bus parkings, but you have a convention center, two hotels, a ball field to the rear.
Well, the, the only thing I would point that, it would be great if we had more buses, because you're going to have 45 people who don't drive cars on a bus. So, I, I think from what I've seen, we've probably all been to some of these areas. Not too many of them exist in New Jersey, but if you travel around the country, you'll see some of these mixed-use, you know, recreational centers. I know I've seen them down in Florida. What typically happens is the buses will use unoccupied portions of the parking lot to, to stage themselves. And again, we want to encourage the uses, the use of the buses, because you can get a lot of people on a bus and they don't have to bring a car to the site. So, I, I think they'd probably use just the, they wouldn't go into the garage, they would use unoccupied surface spaces where they could find them.
And one last question, if I may.
Sure.
With regards to site circulation, access and easib, easability of gaining access to the parking garage, are, are you satisfied with the, the circulation coming in off the jug handle, getting to the parking deck and other parking spaces?
Yeah, it looks like there are two locations where we can enter and exit, and if I'm not mistaken, they're both entrance and exit. There are two locations to get into and out of the garage. Let me move a little bit closer. If you, one of them is at the, I guess it would be the southwest corner, and the other one would be up at the northwest corner. There are two locations where you can get into and out of the garage. So, I, I, I think two locations are appropriate, and.
So, with that being said, with, say you have a convention or an event, it lets out at 10 o'clock, so to speak, so you basically have a mass exodus. So, is there enough, is there proper consideration for site circulation coming off that, coming off that parking deck so that you're not stacking, I guess that's the terminology, to get to that intersection, to get off the site?
Well, only, only one car is going to be able to be discharged from the garage at a time at either one of the exit points. So, you're not going to have, there aren't multiple approach lanes funneling out, you know, funneling into one lane. It's going to be one car at a time from each one of the exit driveways. I think it's a, it's a pretty standard operation. Many years ago, we did some traffic studies at some of the parking garages down in Atlantic City, and they basically operate in pretty much the same fashion where cars are discharged one at a time.
Correct.
This, this is going to be a much smaller garage than any of those garages. So, that's the way, it's going to be one car at a time, and they're going to go out onto the circulation system. And I, I'm not saying that there won't be times when there's going to be congestion if, if an event ends at one time and everybody is discharged. That's something that's, it's going to happen every now and then.
Before we go to Mr. Miskovich, Mr. Hill, did you have a question?
Houston, I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we're on this exhibit, Tony, if I could ask you to blow up the exhibit to where the intersection is at the very center, where the, where that blue box is in the very center of the drawing. Just keep it, zooming in one more, a couple more times. One more, one more time, and then move it to the right a little bit, center it. Thank you. Mr. Ray, I have a question for you regarding the, the circulation coming off of 537 where the existing Pine Street jug handle is currently.
Okay.
If, if you're not utilizing the interior roadway that you have between the convention center and the pad sites, but you're making, you're either coming from Pine Street or making a right off of 537 to enter the site, as you approach that intersection, it's primarily a through intersection with the exception of one possible right-hand turn, which is, which is, which only services to access where the gas station and, and food stores are, correct?
Talking about this right turn?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, my, my concern with that is there's no division there. That, that right-hand turn is acting as a sole driveway to those pad sites, and my concern there would be people who make that right-hand turn realize they shouldn't have, and the rest of that road beyond that is one way. So, there's no, there's no physical division line between the driveway access and the left turn lane to enter onto Pine in the opposite direction. Would it make more sense to push that right turn, that driveway entrance, further towards the rear of the gas station and put in a, either a painted island or a visible or a landscaped island to, to differentiate that that is truly just an access driveway and not a right turn onto a roadway?
Well, Evan, I think the only problem, it's more than just a right, that lane is more than just a right turn lane, it's also a, a through lane for traffic.
No, understood, understood. But I'm saying, what I'm suggesting is. But I'm saying, what I'm suggesting is where you, where you show, where you show the right turn. All right, let's, let's, let's assume somebody made that right turn.
This right turn, right?
Correct. There is no, at that point, it's, it's solely a driveway to enter those pad sites.
That's correct.
However, there's no physical, there's no physical separation between that driveway and people on a one-way street going in the opposite direction.
All right, here?
Correct. So what I'm suggesting is if you were to push that driveway entrance further towards 537, further up the page, and where you currently show that driveway entrance, you put in a curbed island for protection of traffic, you're better defining that.
Okay, I, I, we can, Evan, we can, we can work that out with you.
I don't-
Okay. Ian, do you see any issue with that? I, you know, I-
I, I just see that as being very cumbersome and if somebody makes that right-hand turn, they're gonna realize either A, they're going against traffic, right? Because it's a one-way street, or they're gonna continue going against traffic because it's a one-way street and they're gonna, it's confusing.
You're talking about putting a physical island of some sort where I'm indicating right here.
Correct, correct.
I, I, I would prefer to maybe do it with crosshatching if we could, Evan, uh, you know, maybe a, you know, two or three feet worth of crosshatching rather than just a, a solid wall.
I'm thinking it's more, I'm thinking it should be more similar to what's on the opposite side of the intersection where it's closer to an eight-foot wide crosshatch. I mean, you need that, you need some physical barrier there. You've got, to me, that's very cumbersome. I mean, I'll ultimately defer to Frank, but to me, that's very cumbersome. That doesn't pass the I'm lost test if somebody's turning into there.
Evan? Frank Miskovich?
Uh, let, let Frank, I, I, I've just been told, you know, I don't think we can do eight feet, Evan, but we might be able to do something. But again, I, I think we need to just understand that, uh, the people making that right turn will really only be people coming across from Pine Drive because there's an opportunity for eastbound 537 traffic to, you know, there's, there's an opportunity-
Or if they miss the turn off of 5, if they miss. Yeah, I think it's gonna get more use than you'd expect.
We might.
I mean, I'm, I'm familiar with like Hamilton Marketplace. There's a lot, it's very, there's some very cumbersome traffic movements over there. Um, and I just really don't wanna see yourself set, I don't wanna see you guys set yourself up for something that is equally as cumbersome here, that's all.
Well, I guess we'll let Mr. Miskovich weigh in. We understand your concern and-
And the, and real quick, the only other, the only other conflicting movement I see is if you go down the page, if, uh, Tony, if you can go down on the same exhibit. Keep going. Keep going, okay. And then go to the left of the, uh, yeah, move the whole thing to the left a little bit, just a little. No, the other way. I'm sorry, the right, there you go. Uh, traffic exiting the parking garage on the, we'll call it the north face of the parking garage, traffic exiting there and making a right-hand turn, come, they come to a stop sign, they cross a po, they cross two lanes of traffic to a division into a one-way, right-only travel lane. Is that the intention there?
One-way, right-only travel lane.
Yeah. There's, should there be a median break there so they can make a left?
There's gotta, yes, there's gotta be a median break there.
Okay, so then my question is, then they're crossing two lanes of traffic. The first two lanes are opposing each other. The second set of, the second lanes are two, are one-way to the, or we'll call it down the page only. Uh, is there any, is there enough room for a car to stop between those two lanes if they have to?
I, I think what we're gonna have to do here, Evan, and, and this ties in with the pedestrian circulation plan that, uh, Ian came up with, I think there does have to be a median break here and that would also serve as, you know, to help the pedestrian crossing, I think, you know, in terms of being able to see what's happening in that area. Textured pavement, probably an additional stop sign at this location right here.
But there, is there enough space there for a car to be stopped with traffic behind them? You only have a spot for one, if you put a stop sign there, you only have one car.
One car, that's correct. One car because it's, it's basically the length of a parking space, which is one car.
Would it make more sense to just make that one way instead? So they have to exit to the left and circulate around to where you have a better intersection configured?
We could do that, but as Mr. Costanzo said, you know, if there's an event where everybody lets out all at once and everybody comes out, you know, so you say, everybody would have to circulate around the building.
Well, that's, well, only because you have a fully designed intersection at the south of the building.
Will you do that?
You don't have an intersection to the north of the building.
Done, consider it done.
Okay, I'm just, okay. Again, I'm, I'm, when I look at these kind of drawings, I have to say, if somebody gets lost in there and they don't know where they're going, can they get out? Okay.
Mr. Hill, I'd like to get Mr. Miskovich in here. I think we've got him online before we lose him. Mr. Miskovich, are you still there?
I'm trying, can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we can hear you. All right, great, Mr.-
Okay. Now, I, I wanna follow up on what Evan said. It was concerned that exiting, you know, these calls at that north driveway from the garage and making the right towards the convention center. You have cross aisles with parking and you have to then get to the main, I'm gonna call it the Road A or Pine Drive. You cannot make the left. So either one, there has to be a median opening and have to cross the traffic lanes. But I think you have too many movements with that cross parking aisle and then having another median entry, opening. So one, I think that intersection needs to kind of be, be evaluated to see what could be done. Or as Evan suggested, maybe exiting traffic has to come out and make a left and go around to the southerly part of the building to get to that intersection. In an event, there's a possibility that maybe that median opening could be depressed somehow in opening so that under traffic guidance and directors, when the event is exiting, they can be directed across that median. So I, I think we need to do a further evaluation of how that, that intersection offset between the medical building and the garage and the rec center operates. Uh, it can need to be flushed out a little bit more.
Okay, we'll, we'll work with, with Frank and with Evan to make sure they're satisfied.
At the same point, yeah, I think what's gonna be important here is, well, I'll get into the parking, but we have events. We can have events where the convention or an exposition going on. You can have events at the ball fields. And the, the hope is that we don't have maximum events occurring for each of these units at the same time. If you do, then there's an issue with possibly parking, access and circulation. There would have to be some kind of management plan put in place where some of these events would have to be handled by traffic directors or variable message signs to direct the different events to parking garages or parking spaces. Aside then, when we do have that possibility, and it is a possibility, I'm concerned that, only back and one, there's no real public street that would be impacted from parking on the street if there's not enough in the surface lots or in the parking garage. The overflow parking is gonna have to go somewhere. My question is to Mr. Ray and then through the atmosphere, to Cardinali, is in the event that all these major events are occurring and there's no parking at over on site, I look at the adjacent industrial center, which has parking right behind the convention center, and there's parking in one of the buildings that are behind the ball fields or adjacent to them, that I see over 350 possible spaces that, I'm, I'm throwing this out, that could be available in the event for overflow parking if need be. My question is, is that a possibility that that could be accomplished?
We're, we're talking about the spaces that are essentially employee spaces for the warehouses?
Is it right? I'm assuming like an event, a major event on the weekend or something or at night, that maybe those spaces are, are vacant, are vacant for the warehouse, that could be available for overflow parking just in case somehow management has elapsed and there's, maybe events occurring and, and, and everything.
I, we're gonna have to take that comment under advisement and I'll have to discuss that with my, my client and see what we can or can't do with respect to, uh, that issue.
Yeah, I understand the cross access event and, and, like, we have to grade it with six flags, but it seems like I got parking right in the rear of these buildings that may be accessible. And that is in the event that the management in, in, in some case falls through and there's not a, and we have major events occurring all at the same time. And really that, if it is managed so that we don't have that happening, I believe there should be sufficient parking to, to account for the various demands of the uses based on seasonally and day of week parking demand. So, but I, I, we always have the issue with, that things can go wrong and we don't have enough parking. And following that, uh, Mr. Costanzo's comment about buses, if, if events are being brought in with buses, it may be a good idea that some of that bus parking goes the, into that industrial area, the store, rather than taking up some other spaces on the side that maybe needed for other events going on. And some of those, I think, will have, Mr. Chairman, will have to be monitored. I mean, this is gonna be developed, we'll have to monitor that. There may have to be interim evaluations made as far as what any other traffic improvements may need to be done. Let me go on regarding the circulation plan. I agree with, uh, Mr. Ray that in the parking garage, there's gonna have to be elevators or stairways and most likely those who are in the corners of the building, which I'm gonna assume that it's supposed to be the medical research room. So pedestrians can access down to walkways to get out. Question I have is if you look at A6 and the circulation plan, the main walkways go from the garage and along them that north, south, east, west road, I'll call Pine Drive Extension. I'd have to walk around the, the air dome building, the rec building to get into that building. Do we have, how does someone access the recreational building in general? Is it one entrance? Is there an entrance on either side? Has that been determined, Frank?
I think we'd have to move the, um, we'd have to move up to see, I think the entrance to the recreational building is over on the 537 side.
Okay. If, um, do you have A6 on the board?
Yes.
Is that exhibit up? It might be easier that way.
This is it, right here?
Yeah, exhibit A6 that shows pedestrian walkway network?
Yeah, the entrance is in the middle of the building that fronts on the-
Pine Drive Extension.
On Pine Drive Extension, right.
Pine Drive. There is, looks like another entrance that's on the garage side. Is that also an entrance or, I see, I see crosshatches look like sidewalk delineated that goes in the entrance way. Is that also an access into the building?
Hey Frank, 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 slow down.
Can you ask that again?
Yeah, your, your, your voice is starting to glittle muffled. I don't know if it's, if it's, what is it? It's pixelating according to Mr. Costanzo. I don't know if you can, if you can speak more slowly or find a better position.
I will try, Mr. Chair.
That was better, what you just did was better. Go ahead.
I moved the phone away from my mouth. I moved it away from my mouth. Uh, on, on the recreational building, I see squares that represent, I'm gonna go some kind of textured or stamped concrete walkways. I see the entrance that's on the 537 side of the building, the doorways. When I go to the opposite side of the building closer to the parking, I see that same stamped concrete or hatching that goes to, into the building that looks like it may be an entrance way. Is, is that also planned to be entrance into that building?
My, my understanding, uh, Mr. Borden just indicated that the only entrance to the building is right where I've indicated on the Pine Drive Extension, about the midpoint.
Okay. So everybody that's in the garage that's going to that building, that has to go walk around the entire building to get into that side and get into the 537.
I don't think that's the case, Frank. I, I think it, it, there's a, there will be a pedestrian walkway, just off the map here is where the garage is. I don't see why people would have to walk around the whole building. I think they would just use the sidewalk connections up along the Pine Drive Extension to get to the entrance. I think that's how.
That's okay. So internally, I guess I'm looking at the plan, there's rec center, measuring city, and I see air dome rec center. So there's internal connection. So I walk in the main entrance on Pine Drive Extension into the building and access the entire complex?
I, I'm trying to make sure I understand the question, Frank, that, that there will be a, a sidewalk along the, I guess it'd be the east side of the air dome building that will, that people could use to get to the parking garage. So nobody coming out of the parking garage would have to walk around the entire building to get to the door. They would just use the sidewalk. Okay, here we go. They would use the sidewalk connections that are here. Oh, I s-
So I would-
Frank, I just realized, you can't see what's, uh, up on our screen here.
No, no, what we, I, if you have A6 up, as I'm looking at it, I'm interpreting A6. I come out of the parking garage, okay, on, on the pine, on the 537 side.
Right.
And I would make a right, walk up to the Pine Drive Extension and then head towards 537.
Correct.
And now I get into the building, uh, on that, on the Pine Drive Extension to get into the entire building, into that complex?
I don't think he heard you.
Let me, you know, so if, if I don't go there, if I continue heading towards the convention center, I get up to Road A, I kind of make a left and I can walk along Road A, and then I see an entrance into the recreational air dome. At least it looks like an entrance.
Frank, yeah, Frank, can you try to reorient yourself to that phone?
Yeah.
Save Frank. Frank?
Yes.
If, I'm, if-
Yes.
You have suggestions or concerns with striping or, or other types of controls for the pub, the pedestrians, we have no issue sitting down and working with you. You see the plan, so any you have will, will be able to handle.
If that's acceptable, acceptable to the board. I'm just trying to, to not have everything forced into one entrance into the building if we can avoid it. But it's, it's, it's okay with the board, I will to work with you. I agree with Mr. Ray that we have to look at the type of paved crosswalks that we're gonna put in across the roadways and how, what different textures or how we highlight those to delineate those as definite pedestrian crosswalks. And I did not look at the lighting plan, but I would assume that there'll be adequate lighting along all the sidewalks, uh, not just for the road, but adequate pedestrian lighting for the sidewalk. Is that correct?
Yes, we, we agree to that as well.
Frank?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Frank?
Yes, I can. Yes.
I do have one question. I, uh, and Mr. Ray was referring to ULI studies in relation to the convention center parking. Did you hear that testimony?
Yes.
All right, so there's-
ULI, it's heard, I'm sorry.
I would, I would just like you to work through for us whether or not you agree with his analysis. with his analysis of the 20 per thousand versus the ULI of 6 per thousand and then his proposed resolution of 10 per thousand. Could you address that issue, please?
Sure. The ULI stands for Urban Land Institute. It's more of a planners association, similar to the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Years ago, I seen ones where they had convention centers.
Frank, Frank, you're muffled again, but let me, so ULI.
Are you fading out?
It's a little bit better. The ULI is, is the Urban Land Institute and he said that it is more of a planners association than traffic engineers?
Yeah, it's a very similar publication to the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation and Parking Generation Manual. And they also have studies of convention centers in different various land uses, hotels, fast food, et cetera. And they look at it on parking demand and parking supply for those various land uses. They also have a number of studies and data that looks at the variation in parking demands for occupancy of some of these land uses, either on a seasonal and monthly basis and many on a daily basis by time of day. So it's quite accurate as a good reference for parking demand and supply.
Do you, do you agree with, Frank, do you agree with Mr.? That it?
The bottom line is yes, I agree. I think 6 to 10 is a reasonable number for, for the convention center. They are using 10 per thousand, so I think that's a good number and I'm, I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray, also, I mean, not Mr. Ray, Mr. Miskovich. Mr. Ray testified as well of the need, I guess, for larger events to have some sort of traffic management plan that would be part of resolution compliance, you would be amenable to that sort of supplement?
Yes, I think, I think something like that is needed.
Okay, and I presume, I presume as well that the traffic safety here in town would participate in that because, for instance, obviously for a live event, police department would probably have to be utilized to help augment traffic, correct?
Yes.
And we really certainly agree as condition of approval to, to work with the police department and your professionals to come up with that plan, like we would a stormwater management plan or anything else that supports an application.
Frank, is, do you have anything further?
Nothing, I just wanted to ask about the internal intersection and the traffic signal.
And we caught part of, something about a traffic signal, say it again.
Internal.
Internal traffic signal. At Road A was the Pine Drive Extension, the one that Mr. Ray was testifying to regarding that signal. And I believe there was a comment regarding the traffic signal warrants for that signal, which, has that been done, Mr. Ray?
So the applicant had stipulated that that traffic signal is gonna be installed without, without tying into warrants, that's gonna be installed as part of the development.
All right, okay. And it's warranted that he goes to the private road system, is that why?
Say that again, Frank.
It's gonna be installed, period, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And will that be somehow coordinated with the signal on 537 and Pine Drive?
Yes, and the applicant's work and works with the county to make sure there's coordination.
Okay. All right. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Don't, don't go away.
I'm not.
Mr. Ray, I, I still have some questions relative to signage. The gas station sign, we have a gas station sign, we have a project sign, and then we also have tenant signs, one for Taco Bell, one for Popeyes. And I'm a little concerned about the reaction time being along Route 537 there. The, the sign for the gas station is after the entrance. If you can get, if you can get the oil company to agree to that, you're a better man than I am. They generally want it before the entrance, they wanna be able to make a decision in that regard. That having been said, I'm more concerned about the proximity of these signs by virtue of reaction time. The, the, the problem that I'm having here is the speed along 537, whatever the posted speed is, and the reaction time between these signs when a driver can react, if that's gonna create a problem. Because it appears that all of these signs, to me, as a driver, when I see these signs and yeah, I wanna go get a Taco Bell or I wanna get a Popeyes, I wanna get some gas, the location of the signs would indicate to me that the first chance I'm going to make is when I get to that first intersection with the light there.
Mr. Hurley, I gotta be honest, I, I haven't looked at the sign details for the Taco Bell and the other pad sites, I haven't looked at them in detail. I'd have to go over that with Mr. Boardman and my client to see if any adjustments could be made. I understand your concern, but I think the fact that if you miss that entrance, which, and I'm gonna point to the entrance, which is right here, into the site for either the gas inconvenience or the, you know, you, you do have the ability to make the right turn onto the Pine Drive Extension and come in, as Evan indicated, we may get a little bit more activity on that road because of that. So there are two, two ways to get into the site. Yeah, you could also use the jug, you know, if you knew where you were going, you could also use the entrance to the jug handle. So there's actually three ways to get into that area, but I understand your concern. I, I would have to discuss that with my client and Mr. Boardman to see if there was any possible adjustments we could make to separate the signs, but I haven't looked at the sign details, so I, I can't answer it specifically.
I think you're probably gonna have a tenant problem, you know, but that's your problem.
Right.
As to where those signs are gonna be located.
Well, just as it relates to tenant problems, the tenants who signed the leases saw the plan, so they're comfortable. They're, they're signed leases for those, the tenants.
I'm sure they'd like to have three signs out there and, you know, 8,000 square feet high. That's not a problem. The problem is the actual location for those signs and the reaction time that the drivers have in making that kind of a decision. Is that, the placement of those signs, is that a sufficient, does it give them sufficient reaction time to get to the access points that are proposed, not just to the intersection itself?
And I'm gonna let Mr. Alferi, I think, I can't answer that question because I haven't looked at the sign details in, to the, to the level that I could answer that question. I wasn't, you know, privy to the.
They're all located, the location of signs are on the map.
I understand. I wasn't asked to review that aspect of the application, so I can't really comment in any kind of detail.
And, and the applicant indicated that he will go back to the tenants and discuss with them those, those specific signs and see if they could be moved in some way to address your concern.
Well, I guess my concern is if they are to be placed where they are shown on the map, is that a problem? Is there a reaction time problem here?
And, and my answer is I haven't studied it in detail, so I can't answer that question, Mr. Hurley. I'm sorry.
All right. The other, the other question I had, and I, I know there was some testimony relative to the farthest access point by the, the two-story building where the two fast food sites are located, Phase A. Is, is that, I'm confused, I know there's testimony, is that a public road or is that gonna be private? That furthest access to the west.
Furthest access to the west. That's part of the jug handle system.
The jug.
Right, that's, that's gonna be.
It's public, it's gonna be owned by the public, but maintained by the applicant as part of an agreement with the township that was reached some time ago.
Is there going to be a U-turn sign there? Because it looks like it's perfect for making a U-turn on 537.
Yes.
Does that create any problems?
No, I, no, there will be a sign on 537 indicating that this road is also to be used for U-turns as well as access to the project.
Okay, good, all right, thank you, that's my question. One more, if I may. A3, and I know that in these maps, A3 and A2 show different layouts. I guess it's A3 is probably the most current one?
Yeah, A2 is the approved, currently approved, A3 is the proposed.
Proposed, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Ms. Fritz, yes.
I have a question regarding the parking garage.
Okay.
What is the width going in and up on each side?
I believe it is probably 30 feet, I don't know, is that, yeah, we, we'd have to check the plans, but it would be at least a minimum of 24 feet would, would be the minimum requirement. It's probably a little bit wider than that, it's probably 30.
So, is there a sprinkler system in there? My question is what, it's a six-story parking garage enclosed, what if there's a car fire or, well, it looks enclosed in this picture.
I, I'm not an expert on the parking design, but I, I think what I'm hearing is there's, there's gonna be ventilation, it's not gonna be completely enclosed.
Is there enough of a turning radius for, you know, responding vehicles to get in there if they needed to?
I, I'm not a parking garage expert. We have some, some very fine people, I believe, working on this that have done this all over the country. I know Mr. Cardinelli has engaged the services of a, a parking garage, a company that specializes in the design of parking garages. I, I couldn't answer the question.
And we could certainly, as a condition of any approval, show those plans through your, your fire and police department to make sure that they're comfortable with the access, which I believe, I mean, it's part of the building permit process anyway.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Nothing else? Professionals, any questions? No comments, okay. Anything further, Mr. Alfieri?
That's all we have, Mr. Chair.
All right. With that, we'll now open it up to the public. All right. So Anthony, you've got the screen in front of me, I'm seeing 38 participants, three attendees are ready, three of the 32 with hands up, is that what you're seeing as well? Four, okay. Yeah, let's start with Randy Bergman.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, are we doing questions, testimony, or both?
Both.
Both, okay.
Mr. Bergman, if you can unmute yourself, please. Thank you. You're raising your right hand, you solemnly swear affirm that information, questions, comments, or testimonies that present before the board directed to the applicant and the board's professionals represent the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth.
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Randy Bergman, B-E-R-G-M-A-N-N, 5 Brentwood Drive in Jackson.
Mr. Bergman, Mr. Bergman, you've probably heard the instructions earlier, if not, we do have people that have been listening and that wish to participate, so I am trying to enforce a five-minute timeframe. What I'm saying now will not impose upon your five minutes, but you are, you are free to question and provide testimony as you will. Thank you, Mr. Bergman, you may.
Well, I would hope I could get more than five minutes, I was one of those that didn't get an opportunity to comment at the last hearing, and so I would hope I'd have a chance to ask questions about that and also any additional questions, what I heard tonight.
If you have five minutes to ask questions on any aspect of the application, which could be the last, the last thing you're at. So hopefully you've had sufficient time to put your questions and commentary together and address them all. But go ahead, you may proceed.
All right, well, my first comment is I think this traffic plan is a mess, there were just so many unanswered questions, and I would hope that the planning board won't approve this applicant, application before the applicant comes before the board again with a better thought-out plan. I wanted to ask about the apartments that, that are going to be opened up to those with special needs, they were originally intended, I believe, for MS patients. My question is, what is the state's definition of special needs?
The, the special needs housing are not part of this application, they'll be, they'll be at a subsequent application for a different fee.
So the apartments then will just be for?
The apartments are not a part of this. They were, they just happened to be discussed because we were talking about the solar, the alternate power and apartments came into play, but there were no apartments in this phase on the project.
Yeah, I know, but that came up at the last meeting, there were questions about who was gonna live there.
Right, so we're not prepared to answer them because it's not part of this application.
Next question, Mr. Bergman.
What?
Next question, or your next commentary, the apartment issue is resolved, it's not part of the application. Mr. Alfieri's answer was clear.
All right, well, with the medical research building, I believe the answer last week was that, or two weeks ago, was that there will be no patients using that building, is that right?
That's what Mr. Cardinelli testified to, yes.
So that is the case. And so why is the medical research center so distant from Centristate? Why not have it an adjoining property at Centristate or closer so you don't need to use drones to get the, the brain tissue to a place where they can be analyzed? I don't understand the thinking.
It's a permitted use and it's centralized to many other hospitals, it's not gonna just be Centristate.
It's my understanding that, is it the convention center that will be hosting concerts or one of the other buildings?
I don't know. Concerts? Convention center, yes.
And what is the capacity at the convention center for a concert?
Do you know? I, we don't know, we do not know the fire safety, the fire code capacity.
Wouldn't that have some relevance for parking needs and other needs?
Well, the, the convention center, the, Mr. Ray can answer that, but it's not, it's designed, the, the 6 per thousand is what the studies reveal is necessary, but Mr. Ray?
Yeah, that, that would, well, actually, our calculation, again, as Ian indicated, was 10 per thousand, so we've allocated 1,100 parking spaces for the convention center, which we believe will be adequate, that essentially amounts to one car for every three people, so about 3,300 people roughly could be in there, I guess, you know, at a time if you go by the parking numbers. But again, one of the things that's gonna have to be done, and Mr. Miskovich has asked for this and we've agreed to do it, is have a parking management plan, so that if a concert is scheduled, we try to schedule that offset from peak activity at the other facilities within the complex.
But you can't provide any estimate at all of how many people the convention, convention, convention center may be able to accommodate, either for a concert or a convention?
I think I just went through some parking. I think I just went through some parking numbers that suggested it could be somewhere around thirty-three hundred, but I don't know if that's what the actual rated capacity will be based on building codes. That's not my field of expertise.
I have a question about traffic. Is there any way you can bring up the exhibit that shows the traffic flow for trucks getting to and from the warehouses? With all the safety issues that were raised tonight, I didn't hear anything related to truck traffic, and I'm still not clear on how the trucks are gonna get into the site and out of the site.
A3 or A6, if you want, with the traffic, the circulation pedestrian.
Mr. Bergman, I think this was discussed in detail at the planning board meeting for Phase Two, and I think you were a part of that meeting, but I'll, I'll attempt to go over it again if I can. You have a question?
Well, yeah, the question is where, where will the trucks enter the site and where will they leave? What roads will they be using internally to get to and from the site?
We went over this at the planning board meeting for Phase Two, and I know you were a part of that, but we'll go over it again. They will enter from the eastbound direction on 537, come into the new expanded, you know, service road, jug handle, whatever you wanna call it, or through the signalized intersection and into the Phase Two area, which is where the warehouses are. They will come out same reverse direction. They will come through the four-way intersection. They'll make a turn. We expect the overwhelming majority of those trucks will get into the double right turn lane to get back to the interstate.
So will they be able to use Pine Drive to get in, or do they have to go further west and use the U-turn there?
Pine Drive, because there's, there's no way to make a left turn from, if you're coming off the interstate, there's no way to make a direct left turn into the Pine Drive extension. You have to go down to the reversing jug handles that I mentioned before. Those jug handles have been redesigned and expanded to accommodate the truck traffic.
Can, can work on Phase Two begin before all the county, state, and other agency approvals are received?
Phase Two, meaning the warehouses?
Right.
I'm, I'm not sure. John, do you know? Ian, you need a microphone.
We, we, the offsite roadway plan has been approved by the county, and the answer to your question is, is yes.
Which county has, has approved it?
Monmouth County Engineering Department has jurisdiction on the engineering design of Monmouth Road.
All right. Well, I, I, you know, on the Ocean County Planning Board meeting minutes at a, at a meeting in, in January, it, it said its final approval for Phase Two was contingent on several traffic-related conditions, including providing analysis of other signalized intersections along the Route 537 corridor. Is that not necessary?
Uh, no, we, I don't, no, we will be working with the county to address those conditions.
Have you done so yet? Have you started an analysis of those intersections?
We have not done so yet. We will do so with them.
All right, because it said that their approval would not be final until that was done.
Correct, and our, any approval at this board is conditioned upon obtaining county approval and other outside agency approvals.
So then, so then you can't begin work until that's done.
Talking about Phase Two, which is not even before this board, so, but yes, that, we need what, to build Phase Two, we need whatever approvals are required to build Phase Two.
All right, I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Carter, can you hear us?
Hello? Hi.
All right, if you'd kindly raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm testimony, question or comment you're about to present before the board, the applicant, represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Denise Garner, D-E-N-I-S-A, Garner, G-A-R-N-E-R. I am a, I live in Delaware, Dover Court. They're Delaware. I have some questions. I do still sit on the board of Safe Barnegat Bay, so.
And Mr. Chair, just for record, just to acknowledge, it's, this is now the state resident, so that the board is aware.
But I'm an active person involved with a township, with this township, as representing Safe Barnegat Bay.
Two things. Hang up. Do, hang on. Do me a favor. One, because I know you and I particularly have done this sometimes, particularly trying to help you, which I'm about to do again, let me talk first. You overpoke me, and what I'm gonna say is, on the record, is, you know, the case law's complete that these are open public meetings once the public enter. Now, while it is true she is now an outer state resident, the fact that she's an outer state resident has no relevance. Her, whatever her comments are, the board gives it equally or not to, like any other person commenting. So you're ready now, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very much. And I love Jackson Township. It is a very important township, but my questions are in the area of the traffic, and understanding, you know, the infrastructure that is needed for this project. I don't understand how come the roads aren't being constructed first, and then you'd move forward with the project, okay? Because in this way, you already know what, you know, how big the roads need to be. It seems as if they're kinda jumping the gun and, and starting to even take down trees and then putting up, you know, the structures before the roads are completed. As Randy Bergman had stated, there's, you know, you're dealing with two different counties here in order to try to seam this project together, and there's a lot of, you know, elements that are missing.
So hang on, hang on. Let's, Mr.
I'll try.
Yeah, wait, wait, let me ask it directly, which is, can you talk about a building or phasing plan?
Well, no, the, the, like in any development, you do site improvements, you get built bits, you build buildings, and the roads are installed before the buildings are CO'd. You don't build all the roads and then start. It makes no sense, because there's no traffic. It's, it's all done simultaneously, but COs, before their occupancy is allowed, roads have to be finished.
What I see here is this is basically a conceptual design, and it is a moving target, okay? So, and now that I'm living in Delaware, is where they do things much different than New Jersey, and I'm, I'm happy to see and, and do a comparison on that, too. So they do the roadways first, then comes in the development and conceptual design. I have another question about how many handicap spaces are, are going to be considered for this project? Because vans are larger and they do require two spaces versus one space for a vehicle. So where would those handicap spaces be, and how many will you have?
While Mr. Borden is looking for the exact number, we, we have, we are ADA compliant with all of our parking in terms of location of spaces and number, but he's gonna look on the plans to get you an exact number, if he can.
Okay, because that's an important part, because if you've got even the MS Research Center there, you may have individuals that are coming in, and even, you know, I mean, there's many people that I, I have friends that have MS, and they are in wheelchairs, and they use vans instead of cars. So, you know, in order for them, and they love to come to entertain, you know, enjoy entertainments or restaurants, but they need to have that ease of, you know, parking for the, for, for themselves, okay? And I have another question about, you know, you're talking about the hospitals. Now, what other hospitals are in the location of this area? I know Centristate, DeBor is down in Browns Mills. What other hospitals are within the area, Mr. Alfieri?
Cardinal, he testified previously about Robert Wood Johnson, and I'm not sure what other hospitals he testified to, but he's been in communication with many hospitals.
Okay, well, well, you have to do, myself as being a GIS person and using, you know, radiuses for calculation purposes and ease of traffic, how far is, you know, Barnabas? That's pretty far from, from this location. Browns Mills is about twenty-five miles away, and Robert Wood Johnson is in New Brunswick. So that's a lot of calculations that you'd have to bring into this entire project itself, too. Let's see. And then the, of course, then you talked about the capacity of the building for the, you know, entertainment center. And lastly, I'd like to make a statement from the fact that you have a lot of fast foods, and I don't see anything that's really as moving forward, and if you're really talking about MS and they'd really like to see healthier foods, how about a restaurant that's more farm-to-table type aspect? And using organic foods instead of fast foods?
I can only tell you that the tenants are market-driven, so whatever sells is what's gonna go there.
I know, but things are changing.
Okay, and if they're.
So I, I think it would probably be more along those lines. You know, that's just through my research. And then lastly, I think maybe, have you developed your best management practices for the stormwater management, which is required by the state of New Jersey, before the opening of this project, which has to be filed with the state and with the municipality? What's your plan?
The, our, our experts indicate that, yes, it's been done.
Well, no, it has to, you know, conform to exactly, you know, what the plan is. Right now, as I see it, it's a conceptual design. It is not something that is, you know, final. It's been a moving target for quite a few months now, so that means the, the best management practice that you're supposed to design for this project is still not finalized.
Graham, is the stormwater management design conceptual, or is it an actual design?
No, it's a final design to accommodate additional runoff generated by the project in accordance.
Okay, so then are you going to, you have a plan, and it's a hard copy, and, and what will need to happen for maintaining that, that facility and the stormwater on that site?
Yes, there's a stormwater maintenance plan as part of the plans that was submitted to the, to the zoning board, and there's a manual that will be filed at the county courthouse as part of the.
Oh, that's what I mean. You're still working on that.
The project hasn't been finalized. Not yet been, been finally approved. That's a condition of the approval.
Right, so that has to be, you're still working on it, because once the project gets completed, that's when you'll be able to make a final decision in how it should be written.
Just to clarify, the plan is done. It hasn't been recorded, because it's recorded as a condition of approval. You don't record it until you know you're, you're gonna prove to build it.
That's, that's right. I mean, you have to, you know, there are ways, there are proper things to be put in place. You can't say that it's done and it's not done or completed yet. Yeah, and I, you know, I, I have to agree with Randy Bergman about the, the truck traffic going in and out of there and how much it's gonna be stacked, and then in accordance with the greater venture traffic, that is gonna be, it's gonna be a terrible situation. I urge the planning or the zoning board to really look deep into this, this whole entire process. I don't think it's a, a good design at all, and I do hope that you do deny it, and thank you.
Hello.
Oh, Tracy.
Hi, sorry. There seems to be a delay on the, the changeover. Just so you guys know, it's probably about a ten-second delay on there. No, no worries. How are you doing?
How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Rachel, do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Tracy McKinnon, last name M-C-K-I-N-N-E-Y. I live at seven Holly Tree Court, directly behind the project.
What court again? I, Holly Tree?
Holly Tree, yes. Sorry, I have some papers on my computer. Holly Tree Court.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. McKinnon, what questions or comments do you have?
So two comments really quickly, just to get them on the record. I know that he had stated that earlier in response to my question, so thank you for responding to those. I do appreciate you taking your time, that no trucks would be driving onto Anderson or onto Holly Tree. I just do wanna get on record that we have witnessed work trucks coming down that dirt ring, crossing over, driving over, basically like a non-burn, just a dirtway right there, onto private property, onto the road to access Holly Tree. So I just wanna get that on the record and hopefully get that stopped immediately from any workers. In addition, you've stated that you've got the work permit on.
Slow down, slow, slow down.
Sorry.
Having heard that, we'll make sure the client, the applicant hears that and make sure that if it's an employee or one of the contractors, we'll make sure that it's emphasized that no one's supposed to use that access point.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. It was brought up that you did get the tree removal permit on the thirteenth. What date did you start removing trees in that area that that permit was for? Did you start earlier than the thirteenth? Because we saw trees being removed on the ninth.
I was told a couple of days before.
It was a couple of days before that day.
So we, you did remove trees prior to having a proper permitting?
Yes.
Okay, why was that allowed and done, if you knew you didn't have the permit?
Well, the issue in part was that the, the tree replacement fee that we delivered to the town, about three days, about on the thirteenth was a Monday, so it would have been the tenth. That, that the check was written in an amount in, in excess of the fee, and we asked the township to hold the check while we gave them a replacement check, but they instead rejected the check. So in our opinion, the permit should have been issued the week before, because we actually gave them too much money, but they chose to return the check, so that caused the delay.
So you choose to go on your opinion versus what the law dictates it. Okay, moving on. These are questions about the traffic, so I probably need Mr. Ray up here. Five thirty-seven heading east, I believe it is. Is that gonna be widened at all? I could not tell on there, and I apologize if you've already answered that question.
Five thirty-seven and where?
Going east, so from the new, basically from the new jug handle towards the one ninety-five.
There's no plan right now for this applicant to do any of that widening. The Ocean County engineering staff has asked for some additional analysis, but right now there are no plans to do any widening or any improvements.
Okay, so I do see that it appears there will be entrances, a couple of entrances. You'll have the jug handle entrance, and then it looks like another entrance going into that first section, and then an exit coming out before Pine Road, correct?
Correct.
So without that expansion, how is that, have you done an analysis on that traffic? Because people are gonna be trying to turn right, another turn right, then exits out left right before other people are trying to turn right. I just see that being an absolute nightmare without a direct turn lane.
Well, that's all been, you know, reviewed by the county, both counties, and approved, and remember, in that area, you have two, three lanes on five thirty-seven, and then the, the curb lane will be for turning movements into and out of those driveways.
Correct, but you're gonna have a couple of in and outs right behind each other. You're gonna have the right, is that correct? It's gonna be the jug handle, and then a right turn in, a left, a right turn out, and then a right turn in, correct?
Driveways are appropriately spaced, and they've been approved by the county.
The light signals, the one coming in, the original one that you guys, or the one you showed that's in a perfect square, is that one gonna have no right turns when it's red there to help alleviate traffic, since there will be a lot of kids and whatnot crossing back and alleviate traffic since there will be a lot of kids and whatnot crossing back and forth? Is that possible to make that a no right turn in all?
Are, are we talking about the internal four-way intersection?
Correct, yes, the internal stoplight.
I would expect that several of those approaches, if not all of them, would have no turn on red signs because of pedestrian activity.
Okay. And then, is it possible to do, instead of stop signs, stoplights down by the parking structure? My thought on this is, you may be able to control, and I may be wrong, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but if you have stoplights there, would you be able to then control those independently on busy venue days so that you can get the flow of traffic a little bit sooner in and out of that area?
I, I understand. We, we believe the stop signs, along with the appropriate crosswalk treatment, which would be, you know, textured pavement, perhaps even a little bit of a raised crosswalk, along with the proper signage. This is all part of the manual on uniform traffic control, control devices. It's been used all across the country. We're going to do it by the book. We believe it's going to be acceptable and provide for safe pedestrian vehicular circulation. It's going to be-
My, just, sorry. My fear on that is I have worked at large venues. You know, I did a lot of work with the Suns and the Diamondbacks when I was in Arizona, and I worked and was in and out of those structures all the time. And unfortunately, when people are tired or after a party, you know, they've been at a concert, or they've been there all day, they tend to run stop signs. Unfortunately, it's just how people are, and they're, you know, have road rage from trying to get in and out, going each direction. So I would, you know, highly recommend this get looked at very indepthly, especially since you do have that one car length there. I see a very dangerous situation there for the pedestrians as well as, you know, the, the car traffic. The one gentleman, Frank, I believe his name was, asked about additional parking possibly over by the warehouses. It is my understanding from the planning board that only trucks will be, have access in and out of that area for the safety of the pedestrians. So I'd like to emphasize that, that that not be an option at this point when looking at parking, because that will cause potential issues with that and safety issues. And then my last question for tonight, you had stated that you were doing 10 spaces per thousand square feet, which you were getting an 82 percentile. It was my understanding. Of that, you will have handicapped, and you said you've reached 100% of the ADA handicap spaces required with this cutback. Is that correct?
Nope, there was a lot there, and I think Ian has been trying to, I, go back to the handicap parking spaces. I know that we're ADA compliant, and I know Ian has testified to that, but could you go over that question one more time? I'm not sure I-
Absolutely. I talk fast, I apologize. Are you 100%? You have 100% of the ADA required spots, correct?
Yes, yes.
And that is with the lower to 82% required in total, correct?
Yes.
What percent of the remaining 82% is for EV or electronic vehicle parking only? Because that will distract or take away from regular parking, which would greatly diminish that percentage for the majority of people at this time until we get to an EV.
The number, it's my understanding, and Ian can correct me if I'm wrong, the number of ADA compliance spaces is based on the overall number of spaces. It's a certain percentage, so they're included in the, in the parking cap.
Correct, but the EV spaces, how many EV spaces, electronic vehicle parking that you discussed before?
I don't think we've figured that out yet.
So with the 82%, we're not sure what percentage of that is going to be for the general public at this time, being that majority of people are using gas-powered cars, correct?
There will be, you know, electric charging stations on the site. We're not sure where they'll be, how many they, there will be, but there, they will be there. That's the future, and we're aware of it.
Okay, I just do think that it's something the board needs to get a percentage on and a number on, because it can drastically reduce the number of parking.
Ms. McKinnon, you're, you're talking over him, but I'm going to let you finish, but you're, you're at eight minutes in, so please wrap up your final question or comment to Mr. Ray, and he'll ask you.
Yeah, if your question is, are the electric vehicle charging spaces counted, would they be counted in the overall count? The answer is yes.
Okay, so we just don't know what the normal gas parking spot percentage is?
We don't know that yet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McKinnon. Okay, Anthony, who's next? Miss, Ares Bayan? Ares Bayan, or Bayan? Are you there? Not yet?
Can you hear me?
All right, there you are, Ms. Bayan. We can hear you.
Yeah, like the young lady had said before, and there must have been a lag, and it, it asked me to rejoin somehow. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Anybody want to swear me in?
You can see you, but we can hear you.
And I don't know why you can't see me, because I've turned on my video. Let's see if I can do it this way.
Oh, maybe, maybe. Yeah.
It's not coming through. I can't even go to video settings.
Ms. Bayan, we're going to proceed with you.
Okay.
We can hear you. Mr. Gertner will swear you in, and we'll go from there.
Ms. Bayan, we're taking your word. You're raising your right hand. Do solemnly swear affirm, nation questions, comments, or testimony about the, present before the board, represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
What's your full name? Spell your last and your address, please.
My name is Ares John Bayan, A-U-R-S-B-A-Y-A-N, and I live at 846 Perrinville Road, not 500 feet from this project.
Okay, Ms. Bayan, it's, Bayan, it's, it's 1010, and whatever comments or questions you have, have at it.
Sure, I'll be brief. It's my understa, I'm looking at the expansion of that jug handle off of 537, traveling east, that it seems as though to me you've turned a relatively uneventful U-turn to go to the Wawa, to Burger Kingdom, McDonald's, into a traffic nightmare with big trucks and through all of the rest of these, this traffic within the project. So I don't know that that's necessarily a great idea. Also, those five lanes of traffic exiting the project, when you have two going towards 195, 537 east, and then you've got a couple that are going straight across and one going left, like there, I, it just looks like that's going to be mass confusion there, especially with what looks like, you know, a traffic light and then another traffic light right there at the 195 entrance exit. And I, I think that it's just going to be a nightmare myself personally. I just don't think that it was planned out right. Like I said, you're going to bring everybody past the pads on that U-turn now, pass all your pads of parking lots and 7-Eleven and gas station, whatever else. And I think that that's just going to cause the people coming off of 537 that just want to go over to the Wawa, major inconvenience, a major inconvenience. I wanted to know whether or not the traffic study was performed during different seasons, because we know that we have a traffic nightmare for Great Adventure during a certain time of year. We have a traffic nightmare for the Jackson outlets during a certain time of year, sure traffic and the like. So I was just wondering, like, you know, did you do the traffic study in the middle of the wintertime when nobody's traveling anywhere?
Well, I, I guess I'll answer that question. We have been, as Mr. Alfieri indicated at the beginning of the presentation, my firm has been involved with this project for a substantial amount of time. We've, we've actually also done work for Six Flags over the years. We've done traffic counts on Route 537 and at the intersections that are in question every season, weekends, weekdays. We've done more traffic counts than I can imagine out here than, than we really needed to do. But what I can tell you is that the highest traffic counts that we recorded along this stretch of 537 were in the summer of 2018. And those highest traffic counts were used for the traffic study. So no, we did not use winter traffic volumes. They were summer traffic volumes. Six Flags, Hurricane Harbor was open, the outlets were open. They were the highest traffic counts that we recorded, and the counties asked us to use those counts, and we did.
Okay, I just know that we had a traffic nightmare a couple of years ago at the Jackson outlets during the Christmas season when people were parking all down 537 just to get into the outlet. So I know that that was a nightmare on that particular evening. And speaking of which, shoot, I lost my train of thought. You stated that you need to do, you know, do research on some things, details need to be worked out, you know, we'll have to figure that out, we'll work with you on that. And I'm just confused as to how the board can grant approvals to something. It's, it's like saying, you know, we need to pass the law before we read what's in it, you know, the bill before we read what's in it. I'm just concerned about the traffic. I'm concerned about my water with the, the basins that you're putting in for drainage. I'm worried about, you know, replacing all these trees with concrete and the stormwater rain off. I'm worried about my well. Like I said, I'm within 500, I'm about 500 feet from this project, and now you have large trucks. Is that facility for the warehouses a 24/7 facility?
I, I'm not sure we can answer that. It's not part of this application, but-
Okay, so this is just for the sign variances, a thing like that? Because you said you needed variances for the standalone sites for the 7-Eleven and, and things like that, yet, the signage?
For the entirety of Phase 1, which Mr. Borden went in, in a lot, a lot of detail last meeting.
Okay, so for this is the, for the entirety? Because it seems like we only talk about, you know, signs and, and requesting variances for them.
Well, we, with the emphasis, we did describe the entire project, but the emphasis was on the variances because we had to present certain proofs to support them under the law.
Right, okay. I just figure that this, this project, this Phase 1, has changed a half a dozen times, and every time we come up, we're asking for something else, but, okay. I guess that's the last of my questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bayan.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay, Anthony, let's see, I still see two hands raised. Next one I s, is Ms. Joliffe? Ms. Joliffe, are you there?
I'm here. The, there's a delay again. I also, like Ares, just got bumped out into the back end.
There you are.
Thank you, ma'am. You've raised your right hand. Do solemnly swear affirm, testimony, information, questions, or comments. You're about to present before the board, represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
Joyce Jolliffe, J-O-L-L-I-F-Z-N-Frank, F-Z-N-Frank-E. I live on 5 Holly Tree Court.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jolliffe, it's, it's 1017. Questions or comments that you have for the applicant or the board?
Thank you. A couple of different things, primarily to the traffic. Since the truck traffic does come through Phase 1, how will, what will the applicant be doing to prevent stacking or building up as the truck traffic goes through Phase 1 and into Phase 2, due to the fact that, you know, we've seen before with 24-hour, seven distribution centers that they tend to, you know, there's a delay until they can pull in. And that coming as the fact that the truck traffic comes through Phase 1, how will you prevent that coming through? Like, this, the stacking of the trucks through to Phase 1?
The road network has been designed to accommodate this traffic, and I, truck signage and a truck route has been established so that the trucks only use that portion of the extension, the jug handle, service road, if you will. They do not come down into the recreational area. They go straight through the four-way intersection into the warehouse project, which is Phase 2. Everything's been designed to accommodate that.
Yes, but that's not my ans, that's not what I asked. So when you have a backup of trucks, obviously they're coming through the pine, pine drive, 537 extension, they're coming through your main intersection, that'll be signalized, and then they turn, they come through to the, I would say, border of Phase 1, Phase 2, and then come into the one of the large, one, larger or the smaller facilities. But you could have backing up, because as they're trying to get into their loading bays, which I've seen in Robbinsville, a backup as they backed up into your main drive. How would you prevent that?
The, the warehouses and the loading areas for the warehouses are sufficiently away distance-wise from the balance of the site, that that's, that's not going to be an issue. And there, there won't be any, there won't be any backups on the roadways themselves as trucks are maneuvering into the, the loading bays at the warehouses. That's all going to be contained within the Phase 2 site, and I don't see any impact on the Phase 1 site.
Okay, thank you. As Mr. Frank Miskovich had recommended, that the additional traffic, sorry, parking, apologize, a parking be put into the Phase 2 facility due to events, overflow of events. Now, I know Mr. Alfieri said he wouldn't comment, but we all know that it is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operating facility. Does, does Mr. Miskovich realize that that would be, the employee parking's all the time, so there really wouldn't be extra spacing?
I, I think we, we agreed that, we didn't agree to use the warehouse parking for this project. We agreed instead that we would have a parking management plan that we work out with the board professionals to address that, that possibility, which we think is not possible, but that anything's possible, I guess, to deal with overflow parking if that ever happens, if there's a combination of multiple uses that, that conflict.
Okay, well, one of our concerns is that we don't want, as Anderson Road and the various other subdivisions and roads, like Perrinville is the closest to the project, that we are concerned, of course, at overflow parking, as we've had an experience even with Great Adventure this past year. We don't want, obviously, people looking for parking on the residential community, us being only within feet of the project for that concern. Second, sorry, third question. What is the DOT's response to the traffic from your project, both recreational, regular car as well as truck traffic going into the bottleneck of Route 195 interchange?
Actually, the NJDOT does not have jurisdiction. Monmouth County has jurisdiction.
I understand they don't have jurisdiction, but they do have jurisdiction over 195 interchange. So I would assume there would have to be some kind of question or statement about that, considering the, the, that does affect, I understand this is a multi-county, multi-town and state infrastructure. So obviously, all of those capacities, those departments would have to be looked at. I understand you've already worked with Monmouth and Ocean County, but state, the state does run 195, and the interchange, we know, is exceptionally underdeveloped, and the infrastructure's very poor.
As Mr. Ray indicated, NJDOT has no jurisdiction over this project, so they have no input in this specific project. They have control over their roadway, which we, we don't have to address. They, they would address-
So you choose to be irresponsible. I understand. Well, well, then my next question is, since I only have a few more minutes, thank you.
This won't count. Ma'am, this won't count. Mr. Ray, you've testified before, I forget which-
Yeah, I-
Can you talk generally about what's going on?
I can, I can. The, the interchange is under DOT jurisdiction, and as I've indicated, we have had multiple meetings with the Monmouth and Ocean County engineering staff. The issues at the interchange have been brought up, and it was my understanding, and I know Ian was at some of those meetings, that the two counties, Monmouth and Ocean County, were supposed to collaborate and put together what they call a problem statement, which they were going to forward to the NJDOT. They asked the DOT to look at the issues involved with the interchange, some of which already exist, as you've indicated. And so, that's where we left it. As to whether or not- As to whether or not the two counties put the problem statement together and sent it to the DOT, I don't know whether they did or they didn't, but it was discussed, and that was how we agreed to deal with it.
And, and in fact, I just want to add further to that. It's my recollection, Mr. Alfieri, if I'm wrong, tell me, that one of the resolutions at least makes that as a condition. We couldn't condition any movement on it, because you have no, this applicant has no say. But what, what the board did, one of the boards wanted to do, to my recollection, is to empower the applicant to, to the best of their ability and the board's ability to have a seat at the table.
Yeah, we, we agreed that we would ask the county to do that, which we've done, and we also agreed that if there was a meeting that took place with DOT, we would invite the township professionals.
And, but furthermore, just for the public certification, it was an affirmative, and we can repeat that here, I would presume, right?
Well, we have no control, we, we have no control.
Since you didn't run to say yes, let me, let me articulate it first then. The board only has so much power, but it can also make a statement in an, in an approving resolution.
Mr. Gertner, you're just going in and out.
And the statement that the board, I recall, has made in the past, and I would suggest respectfully that the applicant allow it to be part of again, is that the board just make the statement that it recognizes that intersection, that, that, that section of roadway is, needs the, what'd you call it, the problem statement? And that to the extent applicable by the relevant agencies, the board asks that this applicant have a seat at the table in terms of problem-solving that issue, which is really all the board can do in any of it.
Well, except we can't solve the problem.
No, we know that. We're asking just so you're involved, so that the board can be involved. No one's asking you to solve the problem.
We don't, I don't, I, I guess the issue is that.
Don't over-lawyering.
But if the county doesn't, if the county says we're going to meet without you, what do we do?
Can't do it, you've tried.
Well, I, my suggestion is, why don't you put a statement encouraging the county to interact with the DOT to, to deal with it? And we have no issue with that, it's just, we only want to do what we can control.
We're on the same page. We'll work out that line.
We'll figure it out.
In other words, my intent, which didn't go, the applicant didn't quite go as far, is to, is to make sure the public understands that the board is aware of, I hope, the board is aware of the concern, and to the extent that the board can force the issue, the board wants to do that. And I, and I did interrupt, I wanted to make sure that was at least addressed, Mr. Chairman. I know she, I used some of her time.
Ms. Jolliffe, we're about 10 minutes in on you, but for them, the council used up, so if you have one final comment or question, please present it now, so we can move on and finish up.
Okay. I've sat here for three years looking at this project, and I am an associate architect, I know construction, most, I've spoken in front of you both before, as well as the planning board multiple times. This project could be wonderful. This project could be a sustainable community, but it's not. And it just continues to get worse and worse and worse. And if the town and the applicant would have actually included the neighbors of the greater Anderson Road in the beginning of this, and actually done a neighborhood analysis, we would have worked with you. But it seems like the town, as well as the applicant, doesn't repeatedly listen to us and dismisses us. We are not a faceless community. We are people here who pay taxes in Jackson and do care greatly about the project, about the neighborhood, and about the environment. I would just hope for once you guys would finally listen to us after three years. Thank you.
Hey, can I just, can I just correct the record? Some of those residents, I don't know who, filed an appeal, challenged one of the approvals. We settled that approval, they had an attorney, and we addressed all of the conditions of the settlement, so we didn't ignore them. They, they did file an appeal, and we did address their comments.
Thank you, Mr. Alfieri. All right, we are going to take one more person. We have one more hand up, this will be the last one. And is that Deborah Ann? Deborah Ann, okay.
Hello? Can you see me and hear me?
I can hear you, and yes, it's, the lighting is poor, but we can see you. Go ahead, Deborah Ann.
I'll try and get the light, I'm having a little trouble with the light here tonight. Yes, my right hand is raised.
Thank you. You solemnly swear firm that the information, questions, comments, testimony about to present before the board and to the applicant will represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, so help me God.
Can you give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Okay, my name is Deborah, that's spelled D-E-B-O-R-A. My last name is Scatuccio, and that's S-C-A-T-U-C-C-I-O. And I live at 24 Plymouth Court in Jackson, and I am concerned about this project, not as just as a Jackson resident, but because I have a large number of friends who live right by the project and family members.
Okay, Ms.
I was one of the people who was in the original lawsuit.
Ms. Scatuccio.
Yes, sir.
It is 10:30, we are, we are beyond our timeframe, however, you're on, and your five minutes are yours to make your comment or to ask your questions. You may proceed.
Okay, and I'm going to try and speak as quickly as I can. I was one of the original people who was part of the original lawsuit, and I'm going to mention specifically that one of the questions and problems we had was not addressed by this, by the applicant, so that is not totally true information. And one of the things we were concerned about, and I am an advocate for the disabled and have been in the Ocean and Monmouth County area for 35 years. One of our concerns was, especially now that this time of year is springtime, is the worst time for exposure to Lyme and tick-borne diseases, and is the migration period for birds and animals. You have started to clear cut the forest, and we had asked you in the original suit to please make sure that you were going to put up some kind of fencing and use some kind of product, whether it was a natural product or a chemical product, to help protect the neighbors from contracting Lyme and tick-borne diseases. That was never even addressed, so please don't say that you addressed all our concerns, because that is not true. My concern is, and I have actually spoken on behalf to Jackson as part of a request of the, of our mayor a number of years ago, on children and Lyme disease in our area. Ocean Township is number one for Lyme and tick-borne diseases in New Jersey. And guess what? Jackson Township is number one in Ocean. We asked you, as neighbors, to please consider watching out for the betterment of people who would contract this disease, and we know 30% of people who get Lyme disease and tick-borne diseases will become chronic, and in some cases, they will die, and we've lost a few Jackson residents to Lyme and tick-borne diseases. The township did nothing to address this, and neither did the applicant, even though you were asked, and I have that documentation in writing. So I want to know, what are you going to do about this now? That I've already gotten several calls from neighbors in that area, that the animal increase into their property has become greater because of the clear cutting, and a number of people and animals who are pets have contracted Lyme disease, Babesiosis, Erykahiosis, and Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever. So what is the applicant going to do? And I also want to make it very clear to you that there are many cases where people who get Lyme disease later develop MS, because the disease have wrapped their bodies, and now they have to worry about having their myelosheathing disintegrate, because now they're stuck with Lyme disease and MS. So what are you going to do about it, gentlemen?
The only.
That's all I got to say.
If, if, and I, I don't have the settlement agreement in front of me, if there was a provision in there that required some measures that we're not addressing, then obviously we have to. So first, I'm hearing that there's an issue, but we have a settlement agreement that's certainly enforceable, so we'll look at that, and I'll talk to my clients about it. I don't remember the details, unfortunately.
Well, then, don't go around, sir, please, and say, we met all your, 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 your concerns. Because that concern was one of mine, and it was never met.
Until just now, that's the first time I've heard that there was an issue. So I apologize if, if I misspoke, but that's the first time we've been told.
Because close to a million people in the United States will contract Lyme disease every year in this country, and New Jersey has been one of the top states, between the five and 10 top states in the country. And this is a huge problem in Jackson. And whatever you're saying, sir, I'd like to hear it, please.
We will look at the settlement agreement. I will make sure that if there's a provision in there, my client has heard it, and they're going to have to comply. I, I don't remember that.
That's why we had asked for fencing to help stop the animals migrate into the neighbors' homes, and we also had asked about having the property treated, because I spoke to the lawyer who presented the settlement on behalf of the, of the people. And I also wanted to know, who do I write to to find out what you're finally going to do in these three phases for keeping the timeframe open for exposure to the traffic? Is it going to be 7, 24/7? Is it going to be like the other developments in the area where they close by a certain time? I think the residents deserve the right to know how, how long these different three phases are going to be allowed to stay open. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Scatuccio. All right. With that, there are no other hands up, and we're beyond our 10:30 time limit, so with that, I am closing the public portion of the meeting. All right. Mr. Alfieri, any closing comments?
Now, due to the lateness of the hour, we respect your time and efforts, and we'd request that the board act favorably on the application.
Okay, board members, it's ours.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You may, Mr. Hurley, thank you.
The major concern I have on this application relative to the signs I've already mentioned, and it's the proximity of these signs, however, Mr. Alfieri has helped me out in that regard, because he had indicated that A2, which has been presented as a, a plan, as approved already. And that approved plan already has those signs and the approximate locations and approximate numbers. So having, having found out that that's already been addressed and approved either by this board or the, or the planning board, whichever it may have been, that relieves me of my problems, so I have no, no major objection.
One of the, one of the reasons that they're, they're here tonight is for the parking garage. I wonder, that's one of the focus points of the application, and that is, they're seeking a variance for that. Based upon the testimony and given the overall size of this project, a parking garage in that particular location to accommodate the parking and the concerns of the parking seems logical. Also, based upon the, the renderings that we have seen and the testimony as to where it would be placed and how it would be placed, and the applicant's testimony and assurance is that they'll be working with our professionals in order to coordinate the traffic patterns and the pedestrian patterns, so it is well-lit and that it's safe, I think, in order to, in order to their benefit, and I see it as a, I see it as the positive criteria being satisfied. I also do not, I do not see any, I don't see that it dramatically or substantially affects the, the negative criteria. It's not substantially imposing or diminishing our zone plan or ordinance in that regard. I think overall, it's a benefit. I think the references that they made to the MLUL in terms of the purposes of the zone are, are met. The, they're also, they're also seeking a minor subdivision approval, I believe, to subdivide an existing lot, three lots, two, three, and four into two lots. That seems also logical in, in light of the testament that was made. I don't, would have any objection to the subdivision of those lots. And in that regard, I believe it's an amended final major site plan that, that is, that is also being sought. I was looking at Mr. Peters' report, because he actually did two of them, to try to, to try to carve them up for us to help us. So one is on the minor subdivision, and then the other one is the amended final site plan approval with the D1 use variance for, for Phase One. Now, I'm not 100% certain, but I believe within Mr. Peters' notes and also the applicant, they're also proposing some size differentials into some of the buildings. Building five is a new 81,700 square foot building. I think that's one of the amendments. I think another amendment is building two, a 24,000 square foot restaurant, and I believe the, the applicant's testimony in that, in that regard is, is also sufficient. I see no objection to those changes. Let me see what else. Obviously, there were many representations made by Mr. Alfieri and his, and the applicant's experts in terms of, of obtaining appropriate approvals, and there was a bulk. What the heck was the bulk? Sign in the side yard setback, right? Was there, was there a minimum side yard setback for accessory structure for the sign height?
No, the sign on the 200 feet from the traffic signal, which we agreed to move to 180 feet.
185, 80 something? Thank you, okay. And I think that's it, in terms of at least what I recall, what I see, so, all things considered, I, I think the applicant has met their burden, and I would, I would look favorably on their application.
I totally agree. Based on everything that we've brought up to their side, they've represented changes to be made. I'd like to see our board engineer and planner and the traffic engineer to sit down to finite these items that are still left up in the air. I don't like things left up in the air, but to clear them up, how many disabled parking spots are going to be available? I like the fact that you did come forward with the pedestrian, okay, movement. That's very important for safety. I'm very strong on the safety issues. So everything that we put up against them, they've come back and agreed to, so I have no issues with this. I'd like to make a motion, if anybody.
Your point that, that there's been sufficient testimony?
Is it your point that there's been sufficient testimony to grant the preliminary final approval, subject to the conditions and deference to the board professionals to work out those final details, such as the traffic plan, the pedestrian plan with lighting, and the like, as you've discussed?
And that's my, I'd make a motion too, if you wanted to speak. I'll make the motion to approve this application based on everything that you've put into the motion.
Any further comments from the board members before we obtain a second to the motion? Nothing further? Do we have a second? Mr. Hurley, seconds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Melo?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
For staying late twice for us, I appreciate it.
Thank you, congratulations. Any additional issues? Because I'm always rushing this out of here before I defer to you to wrap up anything else, calendar issues, any housekeeping issues?
Not this evening.
All right, good. You have a motion to adjourn? Yes, all in favor, I, yourself, we are done.